Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to this meeting this evening, the Planning Board meeting this October 16th, 2025. If you'll take notice, behind me, to my right, is the one exit, and then to your left is another, right behind you, and then down the hall is a third emergency exit. If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take a few moments to remember our first responders and service personnel, past and present. Has the Board had a chance, all right, can I have a motion to open the meeting? Still moved? Second?
Second.
In favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Has the Board had a chance to review the minutes, November and September?
Yep.
Can I have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second? Okay, that's Rob and Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this point, we have two applicants under the public hearing, Garrido Two-Family House. I'll be recusing myself from that as I'm involved in a financial relationship with Mr. Garrido. Thank you. And I'll be running the meeting from here. All right, so the first item on the agenda is the Garrido Two-Family site plan approval. Can, do you want to give us a brief overview of what's, of the project status?
And just for the record, if you don't mind me noting, the Planning Department has reviewed the affidavit of publication for the newspaper, and that was done properly. Certified mailings were sent out, but two of them were sent out actually in less than the 10 days that are required by New York State Town Law, Section 274A, subsection 8, meaning that the Board, under the advice of the legal counsel, who actually couldn't make it tonight, there's a conflict counsel, he was unable to make it tonight, last minute thing, but he let me know that we could open up the public hearing. You can listen to comments and record comments and respond as necessary or if you'd like. You can have continued discussions about the project, but we cannot close the public hearing, it will have to be adjourned to a date specific, and in that case, you know, the November 20th, 2025 meeting. The counsel also suggested and directed the applicant to re-advertise at least in the Poughkeepsie Journal for the November 20th meeting, if that's what the Board pushes the date to on, for the adjournment.
Okay. All right, so we'll get a brief presentation on the project, and then we'll move to open the public hearing.
Rob is a, he runs his own property, so it's not like a zone.
Yeah, and just announce who you are and...
Joe Farazza, West Justin Modular Homes.
Okay.
So the original plan was for a single-family home, turns out that it wasn't in a single-family, it was in a commercial-style zoning. And so we ended up making it a two-family, which meets the zoning. Last time we were here, you know, we had the conversation, we gave you everything you asked for at the meeting, okay? We put in the trees, we put in the garbage, we put in the lighting that you asked for. We submitted a revised site plan with all that on it. We didn't get, we didn't get any comments back until today, for, you know, for tonight.
From our town engineer?
Yes. And we did, we did, and we answered all those comments, okay? And then we got another one back like 10 minutes ago with more comments, so we're kind of stalled out right now. So until we do that, I guess we're stuck.
Well, we're going to have a public hearing tonight, so if you wouldn't mind putting the drawing up on the easel and aiming it towards the public, and just give a brief...
Just so you know, the recommendations that were made at the last meeting are now shown on the maps.
Okay.
The trees, the landscaping, the lights for the building, and the garbage enclosure.
Right.
They've all been addressed, and on the new maps that I believe you have.
Okay, great. I mean, we're fully aware of the project, just want to make the public aware of the project since there's a public hearing tonight, and, you know, so basically you're just doing a lot line, this is just, you're going from, it wasn't, can you explain it again, Fair? You're just doing a two-family, right?
Yeah, we've owned this property since 1960, subdivided in '64. At that time, that particular lot, which is behind the log home, was Board of Health approved for a single-family three-bedroom home. Now, flash forward, the zoning changed, and the town center codes does not allow for single-family home. So we readjusted our plans, and we added another unit, so it's a two-family unit to meet the code. We did need two variances, one for the setback and the other for the square footage, which the zoning board granted the last meeting, so that's been taken care of. I also have been very fortunate, we talked about a lot realignment, which my surveyor was able to do it within two weeks. So I do, I think I may have submitted that, I don't know if they gave it to you, because that'll probably be, if I understand it, a separate application, but I have that completed.
Okay.
So we're moving towards all of the recommended components that was discussed at the last Planning Board meeting, also architectural review. We showed you the, I have it here, the certainty siding, we're playing on the building, it'll have white windows, charcoal roof.
That's what you just said.
It's a ranch, but it's kind of sort of like an ape.
Okay.
I think it's a very attractive building. And it's not going to look, in appearance, like a two-family, because the one door's in the front and the other's in the side, so it doesn't, you're not going to drive by the building and say, oh, that certainly doesn't look like a house or anything, but it's also certainly in keeping with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. On this property, you could have built a three-story multi-unit structure, I didn't want to do that, so.
Okay. All right, so before we have a discussion with the Board, I think it might be time to open up the public hearing, unless you wanted to, we can even go over your comments afterwards, or should we do that before?
Either way, either way is fine with me.
Okay.
However you want to run the meeting is fine.
All right. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Also moved to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing's open. I'm going to invite the public to come up, and whoever would like to speak on the application, please come to the front, state your name and address, and let's, we'd like to hear what you have to say. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay.
That's what we like to hear.
All right, there'll be another opportunity, because we're going to have to keep the public hearing open for the next meeting, so I think at this, if there's no one who would like to speak, well, can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting date in November?
November 20th.
November 20th?
So moved.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. All right, so, all right, so I think at this point I'll have Dan, if you would like to go over some of your more recent comments?
Sure. And just for the, for the record, submittals are due 17 days prior, and therefore, we did not get this plan until October 10th, so we didn't have enough time to do the normal review. I did coordinate with the Conflict Counsel today, who also was supposed to be here, but he wasn't able to make it on a late account, and therefore, we had to issue our letter a little bit later than we'd like to usually, as a result of trying to coordinate with that Conflict Counsel, so. Some of the important things we need to go through, the lighting, lighting cut sheet was provided, it's noted that it's dark-sky friendly, but the photometry is not available, and the cut sheet also did not provide light temperature, that's important components for the Board to consider, so for the next submittal, we would want to have, make sure that there's some color temperature provided. We prefer 2,700 to 3,000 Kelvin, which is a normal warm light, as opposed to higher Kelvin, which is more of a blue oppressive light, let's say. The cut sheet that was provided also is, you know, lighting is subject in town center, is part of the Architectural Review Board review, so the Board, as de facto ARB, should be also just commenting on the appearance of that light detail. The plan shows a trash disposal area. Code calls for it to be located in the rear of the structure when possible, this is kind of more up at the front, so the Board should take a look at that. It's off of the existing horseshoe driveway, and a detail hasn't been provided to understand the materials of the, of the things that are screening and enclosing the garbage, so whether it's going to be, you know, PVC stockade fence, or if it's going to be, you know, cinder block, you know, whatever it's going to be, needs to, you need to have a detail on the plan.
It's like a white vinyl appropriate?
That's, that's a Board discussion.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Who is that?
I think the location, that's something, you got it right up front, out front, in view of the road, so I agree with Dan, it should go towards the back.
There's a way to put it towards the side, at the back, somewhere where it can be?
Well, it's not that far off the road, it's just I'd have to build a road to it and plow it, but that's, if that's what you want, that's what we do.
Yep. So you also see that there's some trees and concept shrubs provided, there's not a planting schedule, so we always ask for a planting schedule, which would sell the species, the size, the quantity, and then a corresponding maintenance schedule, that's required on all projects, site plan and special use permit, so there's some language in 155-47C that's noted in the letter, need to put some of that language on there, including that planting schedule. Do you have an idea of how big the trees are, and any of the shrub varieties that you're going to?
Well, I would, I would prefer to have, you know, smaller shrubs than something big and obtrusive. The trees, yeah, red maples.
Yeah.
So they'll be sufficient to survive, I'm not sure what size.
You have to give us the sizes and the species.
What is typical for the size?
One and a half caliper?
One and a half, one and a half caliber red maples.
Yeah, and I think our, our normal street trees are two and a half in the code, I believe.
Oh, all right, okay.
Two and a half?
If that's what the code says.
Two and a half.
I believe so.
So you're looking for a tree on the street?
That's the idea behind the town center district, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you were looking for two trees, one each side of the driveway, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Yeah, that was, that was something that was discussed, but also just, you know, some of, some species for the shrubs too.
Okay.
You know, so just put that on there, the sizes and quantities, that's all normal site plan requirements. Just to, you know, to reiterate the ARB, so they, they kind of have some materials and things here, so the Planning Board is, ARB should probably consider going through those tonight. Aquifer overlay standards, you need to put those on the plans, you're familiar with those.
I'm sorry?
The aquifer overlay standards, 155-12D.
Is that a map?
There's the five, there's the five standards in subsection D. Everybody has to put them on the plan, and then put a response to how the project does not or does affect the aquifer, and then the Planning Board has to go through those actual standards every time.
Yours is just a residence, so it's going to be pretty easy to meet those standards, as opposed to...
It should be.
Like a commercial, it should be, yeah.
But, but it's required to be put on the plan, so.
Yep.
You know, we've kind of talked about the existing driveway, just, you know, some sort of a means for that encroachment will have to be discussed. Same with the shed, the shed is completely...
Well, once, once we do the lot realignment, the shed will be on the other property.
Right, so if that's, you know, there would need to be, in this case, there would need to be some sort of a condition of the resolution for the site plan and special use permit that would have to be, you know, in my opinion, it would have to be completed before there's a certificate of occupancy for the house.
Right, that's what we talked about.
You know, because that makes sense, to make sure that that is satisfied before, so whether that's you coming back in for lot line realignment, or doing that declaration of, or covenant for maintenance and easement of the shared driveway, if it's to stay in its place, or...
I think, I think I...
Or removal of the driveway completely.
Well, I could, you know, I mean, my son's driveway doesn't have to loop around, he's got enough with the lot realignment where he could pull in and back up and pull back out.
Yeah, so you could, you know, in theory, even if you have the lot line that you're showing in concept right now.
Right.
There'd still have to be some sort of, either an agreement that you can drive on each other's properties, or a physical barrier, so for instance, the Green Hill Farms recently, there was a driveway that went through the lot and went to the back, they put a split-rail fence there. So, you know, there's, there's ideas that you can incorporate in and figure out the best way, but...
So that would be an agreement between myself and myself?
Yes, that's why it would have to be a declaration.
Right.
I'll put on my attorney's hat, it's, you can't grant yourself an easement, but you can make a declaration, which would become part of the deeds, and then if the properties change hands later, then they become easements, things like that.
That's fine, we could do that.
Yep.
That seems like the more practical thing to do.
It could be.
Yeah.
It could be. And then just, you know, showing some of those construction details, I think that's important to put on here, to put, you know...
Like what, sir?
Silk fence, stabilized construction entrance, soil stockpile, tree planting, garbage enclosure detail, the driveway cross-section detail, and that light detail. And then just advancing the plans to just meet final site plan as well, which I put a section of the code in there for you to take a quick look at as well. Some of the things we had mentioned about the Planning Board potentially being able to do this evening, the formal architectural review, including that light fixture, and reviewing that landscaping, providing, you know, I mean, again, there's no species provided right now, so if you want to put your two cents in now with what type of species you might want to see for the shrubs, then you can do that as well.
All right, well, I mean, I'll speak right to the plantings, I, you know, I think I've said this in the past, I don't want to get too much into your preferences on species, on plants, species, so, you know, as long as you're showing the plantings and the landscape, these are very personal plantings right around the house.
Yeah, I don't want things that are going to overpower the building, or block the light, like I have a sunroom on one side, so I'm not going to want something tall, something, you know, more towards the ground.
Yeah, I mean, the only species I would opine on are the street species, because that's, you know, the visual impact at the street, and you're showing red maples, I think that's a good choice, because it's a, it's a safe choice, it's a deciduous tree, it's got great fall color, you're going to have a very good chance of survival, assuming it's planted right, and you picked the tree out correctly. So, but I don't, I'm not going to make an opinion on the types of shrubs and stuff, that's, I think, I'll leave that up to you guys.
So you're saying that it would be at my discretion to do something appropriate?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to ensure that you're doing...
But you, you should show it on the plan.
Okay, we will.
You have to propose something.
You mean the species?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I would recommend is don't, don't use non-native invasive species.
Right.
Right.
You know, that's...
For sure.
So what do you recommend, Rob? I know it's your field.
I like, I like Ilex glabra, inkberries.
That's nice.
I happen to like, you know, hydrangeas are nice, because they're, you know, have nice flowers during the summer, you know, if I'm picking out plants, you know, for the house, you know, rhododendrons are non-native, but they're not invasive.
Right.
And I happen to like rhododendrons.
Yeah, they're nice, I've had them.
I'm not militant about using non-natives, I'm militant about using invasives, so...
How about Abelia grandiflora?
He's good, he's got a good, he's got a good palate, Abelia grandiflora is really nice, glossy, green leaf.
I know that you like those, so...
Yeah, I do. And they have a beautiful delicate little trumpet flower, and it's, and they flower in the summer when nothing else is flowering. Yeah, there's just, there's a bunch, you know, I try to stick with broadleaf evergreens, you know? And then, you know, you should mix in ground covers when you can, you know, just try to, you know, be diverse in your plantings. But, all right, so just moving beyond that, and I'm going to open it up to my Board as well, but the lot line realignment, that's not part of this?
No.
Application, that's something you intend to do in the future?
I have it here, if you wanted to look at it, but it's not, it's not going to be part of this application, but it will be done.
Oh.
Under the condition of the CO. And actually, as a result...
I think, you chose the line on here, I see where you, it says future lot line adjustment?
It does.
Yeah, you don't have to do that.
It's what I like. I'll show you this, because I'm really happy.
All right, okay.
It gives, it gives both lots a very nice, even, balanced appearance on the side.
Oh, yeah.
Because the other one was just, it was, I don't know how I ever done that.
Yeah.
But I think this lays much better.
Yeah, yeah.
It gives my son's house a better parking activity.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good idea, why wouldn't you do it as part of this process?
To put frankly, I didn't think I'd have this script, but I have a gentleman who's very popular, my husband, who's a surveyor, that did it, and it's been heard.
So is there a way to modify your application?
I don't know.
Is that something?
Yeah, I mean, technically, you could supplement the application with another application for subdivision, it's, it's going to add time, though, and that's, that's where you're...
See, I thought that was a foundation.
Yeah.
So I opted this as a separate application.
That's fine.
I'll keep it moving.
Yeah.
I'll be back, I'll be, be separate, like the bottom bag in the thunder, separate application.
I suppose, you know, it's a, it's a simple lot line realignment, which is also a type two action.
Right.
So there's no secret implications associated with running them in separate paths, but...
Okay, well, it'll either be November or December, and I want to keep it moving just because, several reasons.
I understand, so that makes sense, it's two different processes, so...
And this, the laundry, it's a piece of money.
And they just zipped it out?
So that's going to push the rear line out a little bit also?
It does. It, it, it actually, I think both lots configured much better than they were.
Right. Yep, I think it makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, I think a lot...
And the real home lot gained acreage in this one, so they both were.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And I have to notify myself about it, too.
So regarding your septic system and well, is that being vetted with the Department of Health?
It's all approved.
It's all approved, oh, because it was previous...
It's actually...
No, it got a big proof.
Yeah, well, it was redesigned. I had to, I had to move the septic, because it was in the front of the house, encroaching the stream.
Okay.
So we did perk tests, it went to the Board of Health, and I wish I had brought it with me, I have it at home, but it's all stamped by the Board, and filed with the Dutchess County Clerk.
Oh.
So it's all set.
Yeah, we had mentioned that in the response, in our review letter, just give us a copy of that.
Oh, yeah, I thought I did, maybe not, but it, that was done in three or four days.
All right, wow, I mean, that's the first time we've ever, usually we're waiting for the septic approval afterward, so...
Well, you know, Rob, it's a case where time changed, and they understood that, and they, I don't know, it just worked out. The septic is not...
Well, the soils haven't changed, so that's, that makes their decision easier.
It's just the location.
Yeah.
And the septic is not a complicated system, no filler, you know?
Right. All right, and the only other thing is Sunrise Drive, is that a town road, is that a county road?
Town.
It's a town road.
All right. Do we require any approvals from our...
Yeah, so one, one of the things we mentioned in here is also just a referral over to the, to the Highway Superintendent, so he, he gets, he gets copies of this review letter, and I would just ask, you know, Cheryl, if you can forward a copy of the latest plan to the Highway Superintendent as well.
And that, that driveway is in the same location as it was in 1964, we didn't change it.
The proposed driveway location?
Yeah, the same, exact same location.
Okay. All right, we have to consult the Planning Board from '64, you weren't on there, were you?
No.
All right, I'll, let me open it up to the Board at this point, do you guys have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
What's, Fair, from the Architectural Review point of view, what's the siding going to be?
It's the certainty, it's the cedar shake.
So it's a vinyl, but it's, it's put on basically...
Piece by piece.
Piece by piece, it's not a, you know, vinyl strip, I mean, you need to reach shakes. And because it's a blend, there's three bundles of different colors, and hopefully the guy puts them on.
He's got to, like, mix them as a mosaic or something?
Yeah, he's got to pick them and blend it, so he's got to, but they are, they aren't just like shakes.
And do you paint them, or?
No, they're vinyl.
It comes as like, in its color?
It does, and it's, it's, what is it, 40-year?
Yeah, it's a little stain, a stain of this color.
And that's the color blend you're proposing?
With a charcoal roof and white windows and doors.
Charcoal roof asphalt shingles?
Timber lines, right?
Uh, GA.
Oh, GA, okay.
Okay, all right. And then the trim is what, yeah, I think you said it right.
White.
White trim, okay. White trim charcoal roof.
It looks like a cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing the four inch PVC picture frame.
Right. What's, what's the material for the, for the molding? Is that wood, or you use AZAC, or?
No, AZAC.
Oh, you're in good shape there, you're not going to have any bugs or nasty, because I use AZAC on mine, and that, with those, with that vinyl, you know, you're not going to have any pest problems.
No wood peckers.
Right, right. All right.
And it's, I think, the sunroom is a, is a 612, or 512, and the roof is a 712?
Roof's a 712.
Right, so it's going to have a nice lock door, not going to look fly or anything.
Oh, what's the standard, like 512?
512 is standard.
Is usually standard, but you're going to do 712, so that makes it a little steeper?
Yeah, it needs a little bit of more pitch to it.
Looks like, yeah, looks, yeah, it'll look nicer.
I mean, there is, there is a room upstairs, I mean, you know, it's not...
It's an attic.
But it's an attic, I mean, there is room upstairs.
Right, right. What are the features would we be reviewing for the Architectural Review, just the gas? I think the, the garbage enclosure?
Yes, I suppose so, I mean, I think that's just, that's actually just a normal Planning Board one, but the, the lighting is also included in the ARB, so there was a cut sheet that was provided. It's this one.
Oh, and this goes, oh, so this goes on the building, and it's, I think in the front of the building?
The elevation showed locations of where.
There's three locations, I think there's three locations, three corners, maybe two.
Not a building, it's a...
Right, right, the doors and, and three corners, I think, so it'll be well lit.
How many total? How, how many total?
Five lights. Because we have to have it for the, each unit.
We got one on each side of the doors, one between the two front windows, one at the right hand corner of the house, one at the left hand corner of the house, and one at the door to the unit.
Right.
And I had two on the back doors.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
There's one to the three, so we're five, six, seven, eight.
Okay. All right. That's a lot of light bulbs you've got to change. LEDs, I hope.
Yes.
Yeah, I see that. What, um?
Uh, did, did, uh, did I miss, did they go over the roof shingles also or?
The asphalt shingles charcoal color?
Charcoal was the name, okay.
Yeah. What do you have on your current house there?
Oh, they're green, uh, timber lines.
Those are also asphalt shingles?
And they're, they're twenty years old. They'll probably get replaced eventually. And across the street, I think their, their roof is maybe a tan or brown. It's a log home.
Yeah.
Is it charcoal? Is it charcoal?
All right, I mean, I, I only ask because if we're thinking from an architectural review board, you want to be consistent in the neighborhood. So if the other houses are also asphalt shingles, I think you're.
If you want it, I mean, the roof is okay, but I think in probably eight or ten years, it needs to be replaced. It was replaced probably fifteen years ago.
Oh, okay.
Fifteen, twenty, something like that.
Right.
Because the house is, believe it or not, it's over forty years old.
Right. That, the log cabin's over forty years old? Wow.
Yep.
Looks pretty good.
It does.
Then the other, the other thing you normally would take a look at would be doors and windows as well.
We have egress.
But what's the, what's the, um, what's the material?
They're Anderson.
Uh, well, why would, uh, the, the primary issue is the, uh.
Your apartment is right here. I can't, can you come up?
Thermat, thermatru is the front door.
Thermatru is a brand name.
It's white.
You have any pictures of that or was that on the?
I can get them for you. Yeah, it's a standard, uh, four panel with two lights and then side lights. On the front door and then on the, uh, it's a, it's a fifteen light door on the, uh, the elevator.
And then there's a, there's a door off some.
So would you say that the image that you have on the elevations is accurate?
Yes.
To the way it's going to look?
Yes.
So on, on those elevations, can you just call those brands out and the colors? So colors, materials, brand, right on the architecturals and then that way it's.
Anderson with the.
And the windows are Anderson four hundred, yeah.
Anderson four hundreds. What color?
White.
White.
You guys want to, uh, yeah, express your comments?
No, we're just sitting here discussing the, the, the house and the way it's laid out. I mean, Joe's in the back. Joe, I know, but when he presented his first design and we were looking at the way the house is laid up, we asked for, being that it was town center for like gables and some other things to kind of dress it up a little bit versus just the presentation. We also made other applicants in the interest of, uh, improvements or using the application to quote beautify. Dollar General was another one. We went back and forth a number of times. We put stone, we made colors, we made requests that went from a corrugated building to what it looks like now. So those items there were just the things that Pete and I were just discussing.
Well, it might be out of, out of, uh, the neighborhood side, right?
I'm just saying it's town center, so that was why I was asking, because we've done the same with other applicants in the past. And your website specifically says the houses are fully customizable. So it was just questions on whether or not it's, are we trying to match the log home that's there or are we looking to do town center?
Well, we're not, it's certainly not going to match the log home.
I think the certainty is a, is a high end quality product. It's not.
I'm not questioning the quality of the product. I'm questioning the design of the home. I'm just asking, since we forced and asked for feedback to other applicants such as Mr. Sala, being that he's an example, he's sitting here, we asked for that and they made those changes.
Well, do you have any specific changes you want? Because.
It was just the, the, the length of the roof line and we had put gables in. I mean, I just looked here. We just happen to have the drawings here, just as an example.
Are you talking about the front elevation?
Yeah.
Or the, um?
So you got the front face, front door and the lighting.
And the left elevations would be the ones that face the roads.
Right, so it'd be the street facing view.
Right.
It's storage space up top. It's just.
Well, I mean, different applications, we've asked different things. It depends. You know, Joe's development is fifty-eight.
Yeah, fifty-eight units. But it's, there's similar aspects of just peaks in architecture.
Right, right, right.
But again, I'm, I'm one person. I'm just asking the rest of the opinion of the board.
Actually, the other thing is that, Faye, you said that there, um, eight acres left undeveloped there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so eight, eight, eight acres and some of it's going to be on whatever the heck the name of the, what's the road?
On Sunrise, yeah.
Huh?
I think it's on Sunrise.
We have Sunrise and then it goes back to Key Bank, right? Is that what you're referring to?
It goes back, Sunrise, I think it's Conbrook, it turns into Conbrook and then on fifty-five on the other side.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I think, I think Jason, I think Jason has a point in that maybe we should be thinking along the lines of at some point that side of the road is going to be developed.
Well, then maybe what I should think here is do a three-story building and make some money on this. And this is not what I intended, because that other eight acres, quite frankly, more than likely will be three stories with retailing. That's what's going to happen there. So if you want, I'll do a three-story and redo it.
Well, what we're trying to do is keep this in with the flavor of the rest of the neighborhood as residential.
I understand, I understand that, and I'm just thinking of, uh, some of the subtleties that could be involved with the development of.
Has not been subdivided anymore. It's, it's kind of lumped in. When I look at the GIS, the Duchess County Access, it's one piece. So whoever buys that is going to put up some sort of townhouse situation, whatever the case may be, you know? So I'm not sure if that's even relative to, to this one single, basically it's a single family house, but it's.
I, I mean, my, my opinion is it is achieving the town center goal of providing, um, housing. Where we, we need to have multifamily housing.
Right.
So there's going to be two units there, um, that, that helps our town with affordable housing. Um, as far as the height, I, you, me, I would respond more directly to the neighborhood. I'd rather not have the house three stories high and then the houses next door are affected by, you know, the difference in the quality or look of that house. Um, I'm okay with the, I like the materials you're using. I like the cedar, um, vinyl cedar. I like the, um, the fact that you're using the same roofing shingles. Um, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it. That's my opinion.
And just, just so you know, I've had buyers for the eight acres and it was going to be three bed, three stories, high density. I chose not to sell for, for a variety of reasons. Number one, my son's living there and now I have this and I don't know what I'll do with that. But that's the use. It's eight acres, um, with the bank at the end, so. I mean, I'll, if you want, I'll do three floors and maybe I'll make some money on this. I don't know.
I don't, I know, but I, it's, it's a healthy, it's, it's okay to discuss that. I mean, we're having a healthy discussion.
There's no reason, you know, it's up to you on how you want to develop the property. I'm just asking on this.
Yeah. No, I, I think we're just having a healthy discussion here, that's all. If we're talking about the Dollar General, we're talking about Route fifty-five and commercial shopping and, and, and the way that looks. And we've certainly exempted or, you know, um, haven't followed every single, i- i- if you follow every rule of the town center, we'd be having parking in the back, um, which we decided not to do that for Dollar General.
No, there's been exceptions, but that's, again, it's architecture rule and feedback, so that's why it's the discussion, right?
And there's Key Bank there too, which is single, single story.
Yeah, there's plenty of exceptions that have been grandfathered in, but at the application level, that's where the discussion is, right?
I think it fits.
Yeah. What about, go ahead, finish your thought.
No, I was just saying, I think it fits in the idea, I think that it would help set a precedent on, um, the review or the size of, or the architecture, I should say, of the building that goes in on the other eight acres.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be on what? Down the road?
Yeah, I'm thinking down the road. I'm not thinking.
That's what I'm asking. What do you mean? Between Sunrise and the bank or are you talking down?
I can't hear you.
I asked him if he was talking about down the road from, and then that or down toward Key Bank. That's what I was asking. That's why I was asking what he was referring to.
The eight acres is one piece, right?
Yeah, but that's separate from this one lot development.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so I'd like to hear everybody. Claude, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Yeah, okay, all right. Um, what's our next step for this? Dan?
Um, well, I believe, you know, if they add these materials and, and colors and, um, brands onto the elevations and I think from what I'm gathering here, it seems to be that the consensus is that it generally fits in with the neighborhood here. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, of course. So, um, just have them add that and then that could be, you know, approved, say, at the next meeting.
Right.
Um, on the ARB side. And then obviously, you know, we got to close the public hearing before you can move on to preliminary and conditional final at the, which could all happen in one meeting. It could happen in two meetings. I don't know. It's up to, it's up to the board.
All right, so we're still going to meet on this next week. We'll still have more discussion, um, next month, sorry. Um, all right, is there any other thing, anything else we'd like to discuss from the, the other members of the board? All right, I think we're good for now.
Okay, so we'll make sure we get that in by the third?
Yeah, November third. It's a Monday right before Election Day. Yeah, I mean, we don't normally do a back and forth in between the meetings, but we'll do, you know, we'll do what we can.
But try, try to get your, try to get the recent mental into Dan before his deadline. He's got other, um, applications. Thank you.
The neighborhood now is going to be drastically different later. That's what I was trying to say. Well, everybody just cowers because she gets annoyed. You mean to tell me the next person that has that piece of property is going to be concerned what that house looks like? Are they going to maximize and grow whatever they can? That's nonsense.
Yes and no. What do you mean? Well, meaning, uh, by rights, I believe you could. You could say that it doesn't fit. I mean, somebody must be a three-story building.
I mean, the, I'm, I got the day tomorrow. I don't, uh, yeah. I don't know what I'm doing at the time. Exactly. Okay, next on the agenda is Duchess Contracting Corporation. This meeting is also.
Not a rubber stamp.
On the public hearing. Part of the agenda. Uh, to, can I have a motion to open the adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Evening, Brian.
Good evening. Uh, Brian Watts here from DASTCO's engine hearing on behalf of the applicant. Um, this is one of the few times I've relied upon technology. I thought there was going to be projector here. So I didn't bring any actual materials, but since the last submission, the plans themselves haven't really materially changed. Uh, most of the progress has been made with regulatory agencies related to SECR. Um, specifically, from the last time we appeared, uh, we had to follow up with a jurisdictional determination for a wetland. Um, that was the new law enacted and, uh, as we had in close SECR at the time, we had to comply with it. Uh, we went out and we went through the process. They came back with a positive declaration for the wetland. We went back out with the, uh, DEC on a site visit and walked it with them. Uh, thank you. And as of ten ten, I believe the letter was submitted electronically. Um, they revised their, uh, determination to no jurisdiction, so that should satisfy the wetland determination item. Uh, another large, uh, chunk of the, uh, regulatory approval was New York State DOT with the left turning lane. Um, Joffe Lane being a proposed town road and with the future development, uh, DOT has agreed that we need to install the left turn, uh, left-hand turn lane now, uh, and they have no further comments on the traffic study that, uh, supported that conclusion. But as part of, and the applicant has returned, uh, retained Pacero Associates for the, specifically for the design of the left turn lane to bring it from conceptual to final. And DOT, we're finding, uh, the, the new DOT, if you will, over the last couple of years, will not issue a, what they would say is a conceptual approval of, of any of this work. And they, they want to see SECR closed before they move it further along in their process, uh, which is basically just a permitting. So, uh, we're kind of at a stalemate with that. Um, some of the information they had requested was, uh, just base information and surveying. Uh, the surveyor went out and did a survey of the corridor and that was submitted to Pacero in this past week to further develop those plans. But they are in contact with each other and, uh, developing those final plans. Uh, they'll have to meet all DOT requirements, all DOT approvals and any drainage impacts, um, that they might see on their side. They're going to approve those as well if we have to do a downstream analysis or whatnot. We are planning and documented in those plans our intent to handle our drainage on site and correct any of the neighboring drainage issues to the extent we can. Uh, specifically, the existing pond had a twenty-four inch pipe that was installed and was altered from the twenty-some-year-old ditch that conveyed the water behind the house and it directed it kind of a little bit more towards their house inadvertently. As part of our proposal, we are shifting it farther towards the DOT to try to, try and get the water and alleviate all drainage issues on the neighboring property that are having problems. And DOT will investigate those impacts, but all peak flows are handled on our site through that pond. So we've also, um, uh, included all those changes on the revised, uh, EAF, full EAF. Uh, that was submitted and again, we got another, a new shipboat determination letter, which is, I believe, also submitted electronically uh, to the town, so they have that. The applicant has retained a, um, another consultant to try to divvy up the duties here a little bit to move us along a little faster regarding the design of the water and sewer, um, mostly the sewer treatment plant, it's not a plant, pump station. And, um, we document that all in these plans as well. They intend to provide a large enough station and. And, um, we document that all in these plans as well, they intend to provide a large enough station and the piping and everything oversized for all future development in the town corridor. So, um, with those, we've, we've addressed most of the, I think, the regulatory requirements that are outstanding to be able to move us further along with SECR, um, to the extent we can. Again, there's a little bit of a catch-22 with DOT. Before they give you an approval, they want to see SECR, before you see SECR, you want to see what DOT approves. And so we're kind of stuck a little bit there. That usually would be handled between a preliminary and a final, uh, approval. So that the, the board could, you know, we could see if there's any significant changes in between the two, to accommodate the regulatory authorities. We can address those, and if it needs to come back before the board, before final, we can, we can do that. So.
Thank you.
I think I covered everything.
Dan?
Yeah, I guess, you know, the, the big thing that you just mentioned, and I have to get some clarification on that. The pipe from the existing pond.
Yes.
Does that discharge to the swale that goes behind the house that's to the west?
I think it was intended to, and I think it, it just altered, it just altered the area enough that it's not flowing as it was 20-some years ago.
So do, does it actually make its way to the DOT now, then, you're saying, or?
Part, part of it, I think, does, because it kind of discharged a little more to the side, and I think it disperses both ways. We are going to convey it towards the DOT right away, but we're mitigating all the peaks for the whole site on our, in our pond.
In terms of a pre versus post analysis of overall, but if some of it is split behind the house, and some of it splits to the DOT now, then there'd have to be some analysis on what goes to the DOT now, and what goes to the swale behind the house now, as separate.
From the pipe itself?
You know, they, they would, basically, you'd have to look at them as a separate design point, because you, you may be, uh, producing flows overall, but you may actually be adding to the DOT swale at that point, then. If you're taking it all and putting it all to the DOT swale now.
And we're going to.
So I, I just, I'm concerned with that to the extent that, you know, that, that swale is a bit limited, let's say.
And, and DOT has acknowledged that, that they're going to be looking at the drainage impacts to their corridor as part of the left turn lane analysis with Pacero, and we're going to coordinate with them and, and assuring that as part of the left turn approval, DOT is satisfied that any impacts are mitigated that does occur on theirs, to their, um, to their corridor.
Can I interject, Chair?
Please.
All right, but we need to be comfortable with the design plans, that it's not, DOT's worried about DOT's road and drainage. We're worried about the neighbors. So, I've asked you before in previous meetings, are, are we rectifying the problem that we are hearing from the neighbors?
Yes.
That water, and you said yes.
Yes.
And I see the problem as, now that I see your existing plan, the drainpipe looks like it's going right towards their residence. Now you're aiming the pipe towards the drainage channel, which is good, but can we be assured that that drainage channel is going to handle your stormwater and not overflow and go into the neighbors?
Part of the improvements to DOT corridor, and DOT has stated this, is if we need to make improvements along that corridor within DOT's right-of-way to rectify any, any issues that they come up with, that's, that burden is going to be on the applicant. If it needs to be enhanced swale that runs down DOT, but it'll be a DOT improvement.
So they're going to, they're going to, um, check to make sure.
Yes, they are.
But, but we want to know the result of that. We want to know, we, we, whatever they're making you do, we need to, we need to, uh, need to present that to us, so we understand that it's also protecting the neighbors and not overtaking the channel.
So, could you expand upon this problem with DOT and SECR conceptual versus actual final?
DOT has not taken, taken any projects thus far that we've presented to them in various, any various situations, and actually given us any kind of letter approval where they reviewed these large projects all the way through and said, okay, this is 100% approved, until they get a SECR determination from the jurisdiction that says, this is not a waste of our time and resources, essentially, to review, because these can be very long reviews, they can be short, they, they entail more than just one person at DOT, they typically hand these out to various, the pedestrian guy, the sidewalk guy, the, the traffic engineer guy, the landscape architect guy. And typically, it's, it's very hard to get them to take that next step. It, it seems like it's almost a in-house policy that they want to see the SECR determination first. I mean, we've scoped out the extent of the improvements in terms of the left turn lane, the traffic analysis, and any, you know, fine details that may or may not change, could tweak some of those final, final plans, but the concept wouldn't, wouldn't change. So we're still going to have a channel along the road, it may get a little bigger, may, maybe rougher, uh, we smooth it out, maybe redo it and just fix any underlying issues. I think DOT pointed out one issue, a little down from us, that they'd like to see fixed as part of this. So they've already said, as of right now, their only drainage issue is just improve what, just clean up what's already there to make sure it's, it's functioning correctly.
Yeah, I, I remember when they renovated the west, the western part of Beakman Road, the tweaks were going on for about a year and a half, two years, along Beakman Road there, particularly in front of Sylvan Lake and the church, I remember. Anyway, Dan, could you speak about this conundrum?
Yeah, I mean, it's not uncommon to have to make a SECR determination based on, uh, you know, not, everything has to be specifically designed out and approved, particularly if there's an outside agency. But there has to be, um, you know, a presentation or a potential that you can meet those standards. So, you know, in terms of this, like, let's say the worst-case scenario is that they have to hold more water back, well, then they're going to have to make their pond bigger. They may have to reduce the size of their outlet pipe, you know, they may have to do a, a number of things, they may have to reduce some of their impervious. So, um, you know, in terms of like a SECR determination, you could move forward on a SECR determination in anticipation that that is going to be solved, based on those parameters.
Do they need the whole determination, or they just need the first part of the SECR? Because I know other agencies just want you to submit part.
DOT likes to have the, uh, the actual SECR, I mean, Health Department does before they will submit an actual approval letter. Like some, Health Department will review before, typically. But they will not issue a permit until the SECR is done. This is a, this is a coordinated action, so the, the planning board is the lead agency and responsible for the SECR determination, ultimately. And then they'll all, uh, you know, follow suit with that.
So I guess the, the spot we're in is, in order to get the SECR, I mean, the, uh, the DOT approval, right, and hard luck, we need to close the hearing and make a SECR determination?
Ultimately, when, you know, when, if and when you're, you're, uh, comfortable with that, you know, I mean, what happens is, this is a subdivision site plan and special use permit application. Our subdivision code and our site plan require that within 62 days of the closing of the public hearing, you have to make a determination of preliminary subdivision approval or disapproval, and preliminary site plan approval or disapproval. In order to make those approvals or disapprovals, you're going to have to basically go through your SECR determination as well. So, in essence, as soon as you close a public hearing, you have 62 days to be able to be in that, uh, position. Sometimes that is reassuring to an applicant, sometimes it's not, because, you know, if, if they, if they, you know, if you're not comfortable with it, they're putting themselves at a risk for disapproval if you feel like you don't have enough information. So you have to be able to convey to the applicant if you feel like there's enough information for you to make that determination at this point.
The applicant can always wait the shot clock, too.
If, if I may, the, um, the applicant has retained, uh, again, Pacero, who's been working on this. They said they're certain they'll have more developed plans based upon the current, the newest survey that we just submitted to them, to try to finalize that a little bit more in, in the next couple of weeks. And the same with potentially even a Board of Health, just, uh, not Board of Health, Duchess County Waste Water Authority pump station numbers. They may or may not really affect us, we already have the 10,000 gallons allocated to us, and we're not changing that. But, um, I think we're agreeable to potentially waiving that shot clock, uh, for additional timeframe on an ongoing basis, just to try to, you know, we're not trying to put anybody in a bad spot on either side. I'd hate to see us January turnaround, and then at the end of January, there's Duchess County, uh, DEC has decided there's 15 more new laws that they put on the books for us. That you have to go through the whole process, something else has changed, and now we don't, because we don't have a SECR, we have to go get another jurisdictional, you know, determination on dirt quality, or, I don't know.
Right, well.
Which way the clouds are going.
What pops into my head is the possibility of them saying that you need to make modifications on 55. Not necessarily on the parcel, but 55. You know, and that could be done without our involvement, you know, that kind of thing, without delaying the project. It's probably fixable.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it, you know, if there was an issue downstream with drainage, and, you know, some of the thoughts that I had just mentioned was the pond would get bigger, possibly, that's one way. Maybe there's less impervious, it's not going to go in the opposite direction, so we're not going to go in a direction of, they're going to add more impervious to the site. To, you know, you know, so that's.
We'll be beyond that.
Exactly, so I mean, if anything, the, the impacts may even be reduced a little bit further if there's additional design changes that need to be done to meet DOT requirements for the drainage discharge.
And am I wrong, but we've addressed as much of the, the pervious versus impervious surface area that we can, and you've, why don't you talk about, because I'm connecting that comment to, uh, the final version of DOT's analysis, right? We're not, because you mentioned that it could be either, it can be corrected through, you know, whatever engineering changes that would need to be made downstream, or at the pond, making that deeper or larger pipe or whatever. But you also added in one other item, which was increasing the, the, uh, the pervious surface of the parcel itself, if I remember.
That, that could be a way to help reduce your flows, yeah.
But I don't see that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see that either right now, unless they decided to reduce unit count. And then, then you can reduce surface parking spaces, you know, something like that, that could, that could be a possibility, right?
Hey, Dan, my concern is, okay, you're talking about the, uh, flow along Route 55. My concern is, what about the flow behind the, uh, the west parcel? That already, that already, I believe, is, uh, shall we say, wet.
That's the Bugattis property, I think, if I'm saying that name right.
That's right, it's Bugattis. And so my concern is, is, you know, if you're going to be directing more, if you're going to be directing additional waters in that direction, what is going to be, what is going to be the long-term effect? And that effect is going to come to play, uh, as far as the, um, shopping mall goes, or, uh, whatever, Stop &amp; Shop, whatever it is.
Yeah, it goes through the Bugattis, there's a, there is a channel, if you look at the topography along the backside of Bugattis, there's, you know, relatively defined contours that show that the stormwater would kind of channelize, run through that parcel, run through the next parcel, which is vacant. And then, it looks like it basically goes right to the front of the Stop &amp; Shop, right towards the parking lot. So there must be some diversion or something that captures that water and either brings it underneath the parking lot. Maybe it goes across Beakman Road into the Fishkill Creek, I don't know. And the Fishkill Creek's right on the opposite side of Beakman Road there, so. If they're diverting all the water from the pond discharge towards DOT right away, in theory, that takes away water that might be getting into that swale that runs through those two properties towards the Stop &amp; Shop. So in, in a way, there's a net decrease in the flow. You know, and, and with that, those, that's why you would do a design point for each one, if you knew how much flow is actually getting there. If it's, if it's for whatever reason, if it's just dispersing and some's going this way and some's going that way, I don't, I don't know exactly how you would do that. But normally, uh, I would expect that, you know, discharge from a pipe from a pond that's been there for a long time would be relatively defined by now. So I just don't know what's happening over there, I mean, it might be worthwhile to, to do a site visit and at least see what the, the pipe is doing now.
I would imagine that a lot of the water that's coming on to Joe's property is coming from my house.
There's, there is some running down from, uh.
Meaning that, you know.
There was a big hill there.
I am at the top of that hill there on Roosevelt. Water, you know, goes down through Roosevelt Drive, through my driveway and everybody else's driveway, that goes up and around. Then it goes into the backyards of the families on Van Scoy. And maybe a lot of it is trapped there, right, but there's some underground improved, you know, water that passes through, and then it goes down the hill behind all the homes on Van Scoy, and I think those home, all of those properties captured. And then it ends up, you know, traveling down towards the Fishkill Creek as well, you know. So, I, I think that that needs to be considered as well. Not all of that water that travels behind Stop &amp; Shop is from that one parcel of land.
Right.
Mr. Crane? Can you, yeah, you can, you can take, you can take the, the podium, Mr. Crane?
Sure.
Did we open it up?
We did, yeah.
Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. I think the applicant has made an effort, um, to make modifications that are environmentally sensitive, and, and that's good. He's, um, said that he would preserve some trees which will prevent soil erosion coming down, and he's, and will also help the view of those up, the neighbors up higher. In terms of the, uh, the water, there are a lot of water issues which you've been discussing, and it's a high-water table area, it's, and it does have, it's wet, it's a wet area, and you've been discussing, uh, the need for, uh, impervious surfaces. And at the last meeting, the last meeting, the applicant offered to, instead of, uh, to replace, uh, pickleball courts which would be all cement and a hard impervious surface with, uh, garden beds. And, uh, I would strongly suggest that you take him up on that offer. He didn't make a decision last time, but I would strongly suggest that, because that would add much more, much more, uh, potential for the natural soil and vegetation to absorb the water rather than have, forcing it where it will create problems. And, um, I, um, in general, I think, you know, with, I don't know, if, people remember, it seems like we've had so many environmental problems, but you remember last summer when the flash floods hit Texas and killed 130 people? The flash floods were across the nation, and, uh, I brought an article for, for you, it was in the New York Times, where they tried to analyze what was causing the, what was causing so many flash floods that last summer. And the, uh, one was hotter temperatures which hold the water in, and then the water is held, more water is held, and then it comes down, it comes down harder. And the other was impervious surfaces, uh, that, um, so I'll hand this out to, to you before I leave. And, uh, so I, I would just, just make a very specific, strong recommendation to, as your direction seems to. seems to be going right now is to ask for, ask for pervious or surfaces where water can be absorbed by the natural soil wherever possible, including parking, but certainly try the garden beds. I think people will like, they love gardening.
It's good for the bees, too.
Yeah.
Good for the bees.
It is.
It's good for the bees, it's good for everybody and it'll, it'll, it'll speak to the issue that the engineer was raising.
I think it would be much more attractive.
And if it's the rural character of our town.
And you know, the, that catch basin or, or rain garden, right, right next to the driveway there, that's, that's going to be full of water. It's going to be wet, not a hollow, you know, like a meteor crater. It won't look like that. It'll look, yeah.
Good. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
Hey, Dan, what's the soil types?
Uh, they're, you know, the site was stripped years ago, so the soils that are left are dense and they're, they're clayey. I know Brian's office did some test pits out there and...
Hard sand.
Brian sent me some pictures, they're, they're not, they're not very good. They did that testing for stormwater purposes and that's, that's one of the reasons why that stormwater pond is being converted into another, a newer stormwater pond, but these days we, we do ponds as a last resort.
And that's what my concern is downstream. Because you have the same soil type, you have the same subsoil type throughout that whole area.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sub, though, is the critical word there.
Can I ask a question? How, this stormwater pond, can you describe how that functions? The one that's on the right-hand side of the road as you're coming in? There's an outlet structure, there's a pond, I don't know if it's a pond or if it's meant to be, it's dry and then when it rains it's, it's meant for infiltration? Can you just explain the function of that?
It's, it's a wet pond. The groundwater in that whole area on the lower flatter side of the property, if you will, the soils aren't totally bad, but there's a high groundwater table. The soils, as you go up, there's no, there's no groundwater, but they're heavy clay. So currently all the water is going and after it goes through the onsite treatment processes, the bio retention and all those items, any excess runoff is directed to this pond and there is a certain amount of space above the, the water level that the water has a place to kind of store, just to kind of accumulate without just running over every place. And we have a controlled outlet structure. Right now it's that 24-inch pipe and it's at the water level, so the water comes in and it's not really withheld at all and it just kind of goes with the 24-inch pipe. Afterwards, we're going to have a dedicated outlet structure that has a three-inch orifice in it, which is just three-inch pipe, which is going to allow controlled access, controlled discharge from the pond, much slower rate than a 24-inch pipe in those big storms. So, you know, you're going to build up your water, you're going to have to detain it somewhere because you, you can't get the water through the three-inch as fast as a 24-inch and you're going to get a wet spot. Well, this is a dedicated area where this can, you can achieve these water levels and it'll just keep rising within this pond until it gets to, you know, high-stage hunderdier flood and then it'll go back to the 24-inch pipe, the, the new one that we installed. But it will hold it there and then once it drops below the invert, it'll go back to the three-inch pipe and it just prolongs that, that stormwater and it just spreads it out a longer time and mitigates the peak flow rates.
Oh, interesting.
So you don't intend for any of it to infiltrate into the ground?
If anything does, that's great, but when we model it, we don't show any infiltration capacity. It's, it's wet now.
Because it's high water.
It's wet now.
Are you fairly comfortable with the modifications and the improvements you're going to make that the, the problem that the neighbors have are going to be lessened greatly or not?
I am very confident.
Thank you.
And back to the, the gardens.
I love, I love.
I do remember that. If the board's okay with that and that'll meet, everyone's happy with that, I can show that as vegetable gardens or?
He's gone.
Oh, he's gone.
I think he's living.
Butterfly gardens, he likes pollinators.
Butterfly, like if there's a specific, just gardens, just gardens?
Yeah, community garden, community garden and they could, you know, the landlord can coordinate that with the tenants.
Dan, Dan, would you need a specific detail on, on that or just can we just? Normally, if you, like if you're going to do, you know, like you can do some of it as pollinators, you can do some of it as, as, you know, actual bearing, you know, fruit or vegetable bearing, I'm not sure, it's really.
Get the bears there.
I mean, the easiest thing is, you know, in terms of maintenance would be just some sort of a pollinator species.
Right. I think that's what, what Bill was...
He, he's always, you know, he's, he's been here enough on this particular project where he's mentioned that this is a meadow with a lot of pollinators right now and so, I mean.
Yeah, I think anything that allows the water to infiltrate into the ground, whether that becomes a vegetable garden or a pollinator garden.
The point is, it's not going to infiltrate into a clay.
Right.
Yeah, some, some of it's, you know, still going to have an ish, you know, hard time, but some of it can get in, you know, I mean.
It's going to be.
You're also getting a better chance for some, you know, not just the infiltration, but then you get some exfiltration and you also get transpiration, you know, so you're going to have your evaporation, transpiration, your infiltration. So the infiltration component here might not be very high because of the porous soils, but just the ability for when rain hits any of these bushes and shrubs and, and pollinator species, whatever might be in there, you know, the, the water's retained on the leaves and things like that and then it gives it a chance to evaporate back once the storm's over. Also then your, your, those plants are transpiring that water, some of it coming through, so you're getting rid of some of that water that way, too. It's not a huge number necessarily, but it, it does add up over, you know, more.
It's better than the pickleball, which would hold the water.
That's going to runoff completely, yeah. So, so that's a very simple change, um, that's, we can, we can make that change and call that out.
Go ahead.
Please, sir, yeah, just say your name and your address.
Chris Garito, 2618 Route 55, Polkway, New York. Now, you haven't said that there will be a clay discharge into your pond, correct? The soil.
Hey, Chris, if you talk to us, then the camera can see your pretty face and hear you and...
The soil above the pond will have a clay discharge into it, correct? Or he is saying that the soil does hold a lot of clay? Now, he's saying that he's going to have?
Well, what, what happened years ago was the soil was scraped off the surface for repurposing, so the, the, what's left now is clay across the, the span of the parcel.
So the pond will be taking on some clay?
So, well, no, what they, what they've done is through a, a stormwater mitigation plan, they set up this, these different treatments throughout the property, starting eastward and around the property and then it, it comes down to the final treatment area. Maybe, Brian, you want to, am I saying it right? Brian?
He's fine.
Oh, he's doing fine? Thank you, yeah. It comes to the final treatment area after some has been, you know, dissipated into the, into the earth, to the pond. And what will happen is there, that's where the DOT will come in and make final decisions about.
Because the only concern, you were saying that it possibly runs down into the creek after the fact.
What will happen is whatever water is not treated that has landed on, right, that parcel will then end up in the pond and then it will head down, well, right now there's piping or gully work along 55. That will ultimately take it into the, it's a culvert, you know, that, that's right, right by that smoke shop there.
Okay, because my only concern with that would be, I'm an avid fly fisherman.
You, I'm sorry?
Avid fly fisherman.
Right.
A clay discharge into a creek of any percentage is detrimental to a trout habitat or any other habitat.
Sure.
In that creek, so that was, I would just...
I mean, that, that's a good point, I'm, I'm glad you're making it, but this, it's a stormwater drainage system, so the water goes into the pond and we're not dis, they're not discharging clay into the pond. All he's saying is the soils underneath are clay and they're staying put. As the water rises, it goes into an outlet control structure, which is basically like a big catch basin.
Yep.
Now, am I correct in saying in the catch basin, in the structure, there's a stomp there so that any water exiting out of that control structure is clean?
Any water that enters into the pond should be clean already.
The water entering the pond is clean, but the water exiting the, the, it, once it gets into the control structure, then there's a small orifice pipe that goes back out to the drainage system. What this gentleman's worried about is that there's any kind of sediment or particularly clay sediment that would go out that pipe. So, you know, the pipe is raised at a higher level. If you think about a pond, anything that's in the pond settles to the bottom, the water goes into the pipe, goes into the control structure. So it's designed to filter, it's designed to not allow for sediment transport. If you have sediment transport, then your pipes are clogging. You've designed a bad system.
So, so wait, no, it can't be done yet. I have to find out whether or not that was a steelhead you called.
No, that was a King Santan.
A King Santan.
Yeah.
He's a King first, just so you know.
I'm not that good, I'm still learning, trust me.
Ah, well then I'm, I'm in still 101, all right.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Chris. So, so we, I guess where we're at is, why don't you ask us what you would, why don't you tell us what you would like us to do this evening? What action would you like us to consider?
I would like, I would love it if we could potentially consider closing the public hearing tonight so that we can move forward with SECRE and get DOT. DOT is the entrance to the site, so any tweak, we need to know what the final tweaks would be to offer our final tweaks if we have to, you know, a catch basin's going to move two feet here, the pitch of the road's going to go from 2% to, you know, 1 and 1/2% here and we can get that finalized. And I think we're willing to work with the shot clock to just offer more time for these other elements so the town doesn't feel like we're trying to throw a hammer on you. We're not. We're, we're just really hoping we can move forward with this and if it, again, if you're comfortable with a shot clock that we could say instead of, say, 62 days, maybe go 92 days and then at that meeting we'd have to waive it again or, you know, we'll have more at that time and it's okay, well, maybe we can go another 32 days or 62 days from that point.
Any comments from the engineer or attorney?
As long as you're willing to commit to a waiver, we don't have to put a number of days, it's just going to be indefinite for now, but each meeting we'll have to revisit the waiver.
Who decides it?
Well, the applicant is the one who waives.
So we just, when you say address it, we bring it up and talk about whether we need to extend it another month or not?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because you, you may, there may come a time in which, you know, you're ready to close the public hearing. When that time comes, then it will be moved.
In our standing, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we get, we go through to preliminary, we still have to come back for final and if something that the board feels warrants...
Yeah, they could always reopen.
Reopen, revisit these items. So the board can, so the board's going to get to see what, here's the, here's the final picture with, you know, all the colors, all the lines, all the dots, all the Ts, but to get, to get that far...
Yeah, you're caught between a rock and a hard place with DOT.
It used to be, I used to be able to get conceptual approvals.
Right.
I think, you know, Rock used to give them to me.
Yep. So to summarize, the board to consider and have a conversation about closing the public hearing this evening, the applicant waiving the shot clock and we revisit that on a month-to-month basis and waiting for the purpose of DOT taking a hard look at your conceptual renderings and then your, your water treatment, your septic and, and water.
The pump station.
Pump station approval, right? Or design and approval.
Design, again, I think the hard lift there was, we, we already have the allocation and a commitment from Duchess County Waste Water Authority.
Right.
So that's there. You know, we're showing a, I believe it's a, if I recall, it's a 12-inch water main anticipation of improvements. We don't need it for our site, we don't need a 12-inch line, but we, he's going to put the expense in so that future, any future development within the town center that, you know, can feed off of this pipe. And the same with the sewer, the sewer is designed so that other parcels in the corridor would, would be able to tie into this, that's currently having septic in the poorer soil. So potentially that the neighbor right now that, that has the, the 24-inch pipe that's going to their septic area that's flooding this out could potentially at some point connect to a public sewer and they would be able to reclaim that land and, you know, put in a pool for the grandkids maybe, you know, and I don't know.
Right, right.
Maybe some more pollinators.
Sure.
Well, I, I mean, I would first like to know if there's anybody else from the public who wants to speak tonight, but I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward, once everybody's spoken with closing the public hearing. We've given the public tremendous amount of access to this project and, and opportunities to speak, so I wouldn't have a problem closing the public hearing, especially noting the contractors willing to waive the shot clock. And what compels them to waive it is if we're not ready to approve the project, we, we would simply say, if, if you're going to make us vote on it, we would make it clear that, you know, how our vote would work. So we have power to keep, keep it open from our end and then I just want to reserve the right to open the public hearing later in the event that the plans change and I'd like to have the opportunity, yeah.
I, I think we could certainly close the public hearing with the option if we need to, to relook at things if things change.
Any other comments or questions from any other board members?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think the motion would be a motion to close the public hearing on condition that the applicant consents to waive the shot clock in respect to...
Very good. Can I have a motion?
Is there anybody else from the public that wants to speak?
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to approach the podium at this point regarding the Bischoff Lane Duchess Contracting Corporation subdivision site plan and special use permit application? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
I'll second.
Aye. Thank you, Rob.
Aye.
So that was Ray Garito approved the motion and Rob seconded.
That's conditioned on applicant waiving the shot clock on preliminary site plan and subdivision approvals?
Yes.
I think you should take a vote again because it was a little...
Okay.
I, I will make a motion to close the public hearing, subject to...
To...
The applicant waiving the shot clock on preliminary site plan and subdivision approvals.
Preliminary site plan, subdivision and special use approvals.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I, I think that's it. The next mission, I hope, we'll have some more of the tactical comments addressed from Dan, a couple outstanding ones, but they're tactical in nature and then we'll have a more formal idea from, from the concept of DOT based on the most recent survey they have that'll be much closer to, a concept that's much closer to what the final will be. It seems like we need to move towards the SECRE determination, too. So if, if the board wants, I can either start working on part two and three for your consideration as we've done recently. This is a type one action, if I recall.
Yes, thank you.
Which means we'd have to do the full, you know, EAF parts two and three. So, you know, last time we did that, it was, you know, the board took a nice hard look at that last project. It took about an hour, but it's, it's part of your duty, so.
Sounds great.
I can also help with, you know, starting to take a look at some of those. They've updated the EAF based on the latest and have addressed most of my comments on the EAF to date, so.
Very good.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Did you, I mean, Dan, could, would you be able to get that to us in advance, the SECRE?
Yeah, I, I think I can do it based on what's been given to us now.
Yeah.
You know, like I don't have to wait for another submittal right now to do that, so.
Yeah, and I'm not talking like three weeks in advance or something, just, you know, even just three days in advance.
Yeah, and remember, I normally send you guys the, the links to the DEC's website on...
DEC's website on how to best try to answer parts two and three questions, so, that'll give you a good opportunity to do a little bit of the research on your own on that as well.
Can I offer, I, I mean, I, I appreciate that we went through the, every single question, that was great, um, we should do that every once in a while, just to remind us what seeker's about, but perhaps we could just review your seeker in advance of the meeting, and then, um, open it up to questions, if anyone has a question with regard to any particular part of the seeker, and then you can ask us if we're prepared to move forward on it.
Yeah, yeah, as long as any questions or conversations you have are at the meeting itself, because open meetings law is obviously, so you, you can do your own research and have your own questions prepared and ready, but it would have to be discussed in an actual meeting for, you know, transparency purposes.
Yeah, I think in, in lieu of us going through every question, but I'm happy to hear what you have to say, if you disagree, that's fine, it, it sounds.
No, I mean, I think what, what you could do is you could say, you know, uh, if, if just about everybody agrees that there's small or no impact, you don't have to go through every single one of those then. Um, if, if somebody, uh, maybe agrees or disagrees that there's, uh, something that I check as no or small, and you think it should be moderate to large, then obviously that's something that we need to discuss, no matter what.
Right.
Anything I check as moderate to large, we have to discuss, I would think.
All right.
So, I should anticipate, uh, coming back next month, uh, potentially to review parts two and three, and you do not need a submission, you're gonna base it off of the materials you have now, and I will update afterwards as need be in accordance with.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, um, I don't think there were really any EAF comments remaining at this point, if there's something else I need from you, I'll let you know.
Okay, and, and I'll submit any updates as they come in, um, if that's agreeable.
Right, that's great.
I think we did know one change, though, about the pickleball court reserving.
They're gonna be the nicest gardens on, uh, Route fifty-five.
You know, Rob.
I mean, that does change your impervious coverage, if you wanna get us those numbers, too, that would help.
Use no pickle, a little beer.
Yeah.
At a pickleball court, I understand it.
You must've gone there and got very confused.
I was very confused.
You staying around in shorts with paddles, and you expecting beer and pickles.
Those are working, I was drinking.
Gardens.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, um, sincerely appreciate the boards working with, uh, with the applicant, myself, on this, and we'll see you next month.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so, so, uh, the next, the next item on the agenda is the woods at Hemlock Hollow under discussion.
That's this one here. Yeah, working it out together. Evening.
Matt Towne from Willingham Town Engineer, um, so, the woods at Hemlock Hollow, it's a four-lot subdivision, uh, this is the sketch layout on Hemlock Hollow Road, it's a town road, um, it's ten point zero three acres in size, it's in the R-90 zoning district, parcel's currently vacant and wooded, um, to my knowledge, there are no ACOE or DC wetlands on the property, we did have a wetland biologist visit the site, and, uh, he didn't see anything. I noted, and, and Dan noted also, the, uh, NRI wetlands map that you guys have, there's a small Hudsonia mapped wetland on the property, it's actually right over here, so it's a portion of the property we're not touching, um, but, uh, we can, we can talk to the biologist and get something else on that. Um, slopes on the property are relatively gentle, this is, uh, this is a slopes map, I didn't submit this, but I talked to Dan before I came and prepared it, so these dark areas, it's fifteen percent or more, so we're, we're mostly avoiding that, um, there's a couple spots, uh, where, where we are disturbing there, um, and we can talk about that more. Um, so, four single-family lots, each is gonna have its own wastewater disposal system, driveway, water supply well, um, with the frost coming, we did do some soil testing already in the spots shown on the map, and, uh, septic systems are designed, um, so, kinda got ahead of that one a little bit, um, lots are gonna be two point zero eight to two point eight nine acres in size, um, there is one rear lot in accordance with code section one fifty-five dash four one, um, and I know Dan had a comment about that, we need to kinda figure out the frontage issue, but it allows for a forty-foot strip, um, for the driveway, so, we'll figure that one out. Um, it's gonna be over one acre disturbance with less than five, so we'll have to do speedies permit, um, did submit to the DEC for a wetland jurisdictional determination request, and did submit to Chris for the, uh, OPRP, um, yeah, that's about it.
So, this is, uh, right, right, kinda behind Sylvan Lake and, and east a little bit, right?
Almost, that, on East Fishkill.
Yeah, that, actually, this is the town line right here.
Right.
Where's the property?
Uh, what, what's this, it's just wooded?
It's wooded, yeah, there's like a little shed in disrepair on the property, but, um, nothing else.
Any comments from any board members? Dan, did you wanna start it off?
Yeah, sure, um, you know, we have a number of things that are, uh, per code, you know, one thirty dash twelve is pre-application, one thirty dash eighteen is sketch, so we have some requirements on, that have to be provided with a plan for your consideration, so I, I think Matt will probably be able to get those on there relatively quickly. I think the big thing, um, in terms of that is always the trees, uh, we owe, we have one thirty dash twelve H, which deals with trees twelve inches and greater during the sketch phase, and then I always just mention this right to the applicant now, because later in the code, as you get towards preliminary, it changes to eight inch, so you might as well, if you're gonna find trees, you might as well get the eight inch and greater now, you know, typically, uh, they didn't ask for a waiver of any of those right now, but of course, uh, you know, locating every tree on the site, if they're not in areas of disturbance may not be, you know, might be some extraneous information, may, you know, cost a lot of money to do so, um, and doesn't really provide much of a benefit to the board's review, so, um, normally, we would ask that, uh, a waiver request would be provided, our code one thirty dash fifty-two requires the applicant provide written reasoned elaboration with any waiver requests, so maybe you wanna just include that in on your next, uh, submittals, uh, but normally, what we do is we, we, no, I, I can't, I won't speak for the board, but historically, um, that consideration really is outside of those areas of disturbance, so, per our discussion earlier, you have done a lot of soils testing already for your septics and everything, so you, you probably have a pretty good idea of where your real disturbances are gonna be, so if you wanna start getting some of those trees located and shown, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Um, we've been basically trying to get, you know, um, tables with the number of trees that are coming down, you know, the sizes of them, so we can get an understanding of the impact for the trees in the past, so, that's your homework for that.
And I don't know about the board, but I'm not particularly interested in invasive trees, uh, to me, those are a pleasure to see cut down.
That goes all right.
Uh, yeah, uh, you know, I don't know how the code addresses that or not.
It really doesn't, it really just, it just limits it to the eight inch, you know, DBH, so.
I, I personally feel that the only ones that need to be listed are eight inches and greater of the indigenous hardwoods, and I'll let Rob actually take over.
Yeah, I think the reason why our code doesn't address, you know, it's okay to remove, uh, invasive trees is because some people, and if Bill were here, he'd probably opine on this, some people believe any, all trees of value, if the invasive is there, it's, it is serving a biological function, even if it, if it's also having a negative biodiversity function, so that's why our code probably doesn't, you know, get into that issue.
Maybe it was written before, people even contemplated these things, too.
Yeah, yeah, probably, yeah, it's a little outdated, but I, I don't know that it would today, that's the thing.
Right.
I don't know that it would specifically call out for the removal of invasives.
And I'm not sure if you, you know, you'd almost have to have a list, because, you know, in theory, a surveyor's gonna go out there, he might not be, uh, very trained in identifying every single tree that's gonna be shot by survey, so, um, I, I, I wouldn't leave that up to a land surveyor, it's not, you know, it's no knock on land surveyors, but they're not tree experts either, so, uh, you, you know, you'd have to almost give them a list at that point, you know, to your, to your point, there, in terms of like Indiana bats, let's say, you know, that, they, they stay in any tree these days, so.
Right, right, so I, I, I just think, um, at this stage of the game, you're coming in for discussion, we, we, we just want more information, we just need more information, you know, how, where the trees are, um, is this old growth for, forest, what types of trees, um, and, and that'll inform our decision later, so if the area of disturbance is, you know, can get pushed towards an area that's invasive trees, that's much better.
Right.
You know, and, and, you know, to avoid maybe mature native old growth trees.
Right.
You know, so.
The table could include all.
Right.
Not necessarily, yeah.
Yeah.
Include the invasions, what you're saying, more information is better than.
I, I don't have any love lost for removing invasives.
Right.
But, you know, I don't, I also don't like to see the indiscriminate removal of trees, you know, just for the sake of making the whole big thing a field.
Well, there might be a tree you wanna keep.
And there's trees you wanna keep, absolutely, so we just need to know more about the trees, 'cause it's, the site's a, a wooded site, so, the types of things we've talked about on other wooded sites, like Semana Estates, or how are you, how are you going to mitigate the effect of loss of trees, how are you going to first limit the disturbance to, to not take out as many trees, um, please make sure to ensure that there's trees, um, you know, on the buff, on the, on the neighbor's properties, that we're not removing trees on the neighbor's properties, those are the types of issues that you're gonna hear, at least me talking about, and some of my board members, or all, I don't know. Of course, keeping trees on steeply sloped, sloped areas is important, you know, 'cause once you start removing trees on steeply sloped areas, then you have, um, issues with erosion.
Well, I believe, Rob, aren't we going to require him under the forestry law and tree removal law, uh, you're gonna confine your area of disturbance approximately within sixty feet of the primary structure, and then ten feet away from everything else, so, there really won't be any, any beyond that area.
Not that there really won't, I don't think any disturbance.
Right.
I mean, the fact that there's a.
The work is a septic, it's, it's, oh, it's gonna be disturbance beyond that area.
Right, the fact that there's a wetland indicator, you know, I, I'll be interested to learn what DEC has to say, if there's gonna, and your wetland specialist.
Yeah, yeah.
You say he went onto the site, but it's.
He already went to the site and didn't find any indications of wetland, so I can get a letter from him.
Yeah, are there any water courses on site, or?
No.
So, the, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The, uh, the area disturbance as far as septic and, and backup is just the septic fields.
The primary, yeah, yeah.
That could be for future use.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right, yeah.
Yep, um, one of the other things, uh, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm just picking and choosing some of the things here, but, um, the boundaries of all contiguous lands owned in whole or in part by the subdivision, so it appears that Mr. Daley also owns that contiguous parcel to the north there, yep. Um, our code requires that it calls for, uh, you know, that to be shown as contiguous owned, I mean, I, I'm, I'm comfortable enough if that's a deed plotting, I don't think it's gonna be incorporated into the plan, but there's some, just some sort of a deed plotting and, and a call out that it's, um, contiguous, uh, owned land by the applicant owner, or actually, just the owner, actually. Yeah, yeah. Um, Matt mentioned it before, there, there is a question, I'm not, it's not in my purview to, uh, interpret our code, but there is a minimum road frontage requirement of one hundred feet, so, we haven't really seen a lot of these rear lots where that you're allowed to have a, a lot width of a minimum of forty feet for the accessway, so, you know, the question becomes, does it have to have a hundred foot of frontage that necks down to the forty foot, or is, is that intended to mean that the road frontage is also forty foot if it's a rear lot, where the R-90 district requires one hundred feet? So, that's something that, uh, he'll have to, uh, solicit the interpretation of the zoning administrator.
It's a dead-end road.
Yeah, it's, it's a zoning administrator issue, so she'll have to.
Right.
I'm just asking him to reach out to her to make a determination, again, it's not in my purview to make that determination, I'm just bringing it up as a potential issue, so. Um, the steep slopes, um, so, sketch, at the sketch stage, we require that fifteen percent greater, so Matt's plan here shows that now, um, if there's any disturbance in those slopes, as you go further into the process, I'll just give you the heads-up now, one fifty-five fifty-three is our steep slopes ordinance, so then it, it starts delineating it into separate individual, you know, uh, different categories of slopes, so there's a steep slopes, a very steep slopes, and extremely steep slopes, so then those would need to be shown, too, and then the onus is on you to show how you're, you know, doing your best to avoid the steep slopes in as much as possible. Um, it looks like there's that one driveway, was that lot four at the top?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just a little, just barely touching it right now, so, um, that's, that's really about it on the important items, so, um, we normally do require that the one thirty dash twelve and one thirty dash eighteen in a subdivision, uh, that's all taken care of before sketch plan is, sketch subdivision plan approval is done, so.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good night, Matt.
All right.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consideration of an extension for Town Center Grove. Is Town Center Grove here?
Brian was here, I don't, maybe he didn't know, that is his office, his, um.
Hmm. Um. Huh? He was. Should we grant it, or?
Um, so, back in July, ninety days was granted for that, and I believe that took them through October nineteen. This is an extension on, um, on preliminary approval, not something that we've had to do a lot of times, but at that July meeting, we were told, and I don't remember if this was by letter, or if it was by the applicant's representative, that they were very close to finalizing health department approvals, so, um.
Is this Tisso', Tisso', Town Center?
Town Center.
Next to the Crosswalk Library?
Yeah, it's Town Center Grove, which is the, the multi-unit.
Is that, it's the eight unit, I think.
It's, it's the one that's directly adjacent to Sparrow's Nest.
I got a call from their attorney, actually, who, um, legal work, so, they, they've hired an attorney, so that, that's a good sign, to, you know, move this forward and get their conditions done.
Okay. So, what?
But we never gave them final approval?
We gave them.
We have not given them final approval, they, this is only. We have not given them final approval. This is only an extension of preliminary. So our code requires that within X amount of time period, I think it's 180 days after the granting of preliminary, that you have to come in with a, a set for final.
And we already had the public hearing?
Yes.
And we closed. So this is the case where they're waiving their, the shot clock?
Uh, not necessarily, uh, because the preliminary has been granted. So preliminary approval has been granted on this. This, so this is an extension of preliminary, or, or, uh, you can almost look at it as a delay of submitting their final.
Okay. So what's holding them up? Just the, the legal language, or?
Health department.
I know health department was what was discussed at the July meeting, so, um, I'm just trying to pull up. Did they submit a letter, Cheryl, on this?
Uh, yes, it's in the.
Let's see.
It just says other approvals from outside agencies.
Yep.
It, it didn't, it didn't specify. No, no, it just, it didn't specify, that's all.
Okay.
That's why I ask. So if they say it's a health, that's fine. Health department is, I'm glad they're trying to get the approval before they make it a condition on the final.
Right.
That's better.
So it says here they're looking for an additional 90 days.
Yeah, look at you, you were, you did your homework.
So it says basically, uh, next available planning board agenda for consideration of a 90-day extension for the preliminary approval granted October 17, 2024, while we wait for a finalization of approvals from outside agencies.
So if you were to grant 90 days, that would bring this through, um, January 17, 2026?
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the applicants of.
Town Center Grove.
Town Center Grove to January 17, 2026.
Wow.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. All right, so the final item on the agenda is Hollow Haven Solar Project. Anyone on the board need a break?
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to approve a recess?
So moved.
So moved, okay. We could, uh, motion to end the recess?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having us. Um, I'm Jeff Matron with EDF Power Solutions. This is Elise Shapiro with Colliers Engineers. Uh, and we're here tonight for a pre-application meeting, um, as part of a special permit that we're going to be seeking for proposed community solar project off of Greenhaven Road in Pohawk. Um, I believe you all have been provided with the site plan. I sent over, um, some images of, um, some shots we took from the, the surrounding area, as well as a little slide deck for reference. So you should have that. And I was hoping, um, here tonight that I could, one, introduce myself, introduce, uh, Elise, um, go over a little bit about our company's background, like the company I'm with, EDF Power Solutions background, go into, um, some of the project details. And, um, we had about four questions that we were curious about. Again, we're leading up to, um, a, a planning board hearing, uh, for the special use permit, so we had some questions that we were hoping you could provide some clarity on, so we could have as, uh, buttoned up a, uh, submittal package when we go to submit for that, so.
Is this in, in the proper zone for that?
Yeah, this is in Zone C3.
Okay.
It's the only zone we allow.
You know where it is, right?
I thought it was industrial.
Which, because the C3 is.
No, it's, um, Rickaman's.
This was the former Norse spa site.
Oh, yeah.
It's Rickaman's property. It's a property that's across the stream from where we gave the approval for that spa, or whatever you want to call it.
It's the back half of that lot.
And it, and it borders, um, I think Prism property.
Yeah, this is the, you can see here, it's like, here's the Prism property here, they already have an existing facility there. And here's the, and the spa, and the, and the property that, that's actually.
I'm sorry, Sid, I think, you, you could bring that closer to you as your, bring the whole easel, yeah. That way I can, I, I have to go, I have to get hearing aids, I think.
I have a letter from the property owner as well in our, our submittal package today.
Pull that to you. I, I, I'm, I'm losing my hearing.
That's okay, I'm soft spoken. Um, I believe that we have a letter from the property owner in the submittal package as well?
Yes, I see it.
What?
There's a letter from the property owner.
Yes.
You should have a copy of the EDF package. So here's a clip in here, this is Green, Green.
Greenhaven Road.
Uh, this is the, the section of the parcel, I believe you all granted the, the previous special use permit for the spa. Um, I don't want to speak for the property owner, but I think there's a letter also submitted within to both the two of you. Um, so we're proposing this project on the back half of that lot, behind the street, on the upside of the street.
How are you gonna, how are you going to transmit from there to Nice Eggs? How are you going to transmit from that site to Nice Eggs?
Uh, we would tie into the existing construction on Greenhaven, and it would run back to the, what is it, uh, Southern Lake, and subsequent, about 26 miles.
They come right here and. Could you describe, uh, what's around the property, and refresh my memory of the, the businesses or homes or use of the, the neighbors?
Uh, the, I forget what type of plan that the neighbor here has. I'm not sure. I have to reach out to any of the neighbors here for full disclosure sake. I plan on inviting them, uh, leading up to the planning commission here and go to an event at, um, the local recreation center, inviting all the neighbors, so.
My concern is that, uh, well, I'm not sure that this is in keeping with our comprehensive plan. It is, uh, I mean, that's vital agricultural soils there. And there is a huge effort to preserve that from the state level down, those soils and the use of that property for the purposes of agriculture.
Well, this particular parcel, it falls within industrial zone.
Yeah, the C3, right, C3.
Yeah, next to.
But I'm, I'm just not sure that it's in keeping with the aesthetics of the area and the original, uh, use of, of those parcels. Uh, I'm, I'm also in, in area that has agricultural lands on it.
Well, I know they were doing, uh, commercial operations here on this parcel here.
Yeah, Dan, do you know what type of?
It was soil. They were just taking.
Yeah, I think they were mucking soil out there, maybe.
Yeah, which, that falls under agricultural, you know.
Frog Brook Farm LLC is the, the owner on that?
That part has not been discussed.
Chris Rickerman?
Father, his father.
His father.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, uh, we're, we're making a pretty, uh, large leap from.
A spa?
A, a spa and a wellness center now over to a, uh, to a solar farm. Um, I, I think it's really going to damage the view shed of the area, if you'll just, yeah, I just want to, for the record, make some statements here. Um, I did some homework, myself personally, and I think it would have an, an unmitigatable adverse impact, uh, to the area. First and foremost, that, uh, it would conflict with the town's comprehensive plan and zoning, and the contradiction to farmland projection. The project permanently industrializes a significant portion of valuable farm parcel, contradicting the comprehensive plan's core objective to preserve beacon's rural agricultural character and the function of prime farmland soils. It would also create an unreconcilable aesthetic impact. The scale of the installation and fencing imposes an incompatible industrial aesthetic on the adjacent rural residential neighborhood. Family with special use requirement to harmonize with the neighborhood. An unmitigatable view shed degradation due to the scale of the facility not, not, cannot be credibly fully screened from view from all adjacent properties and roads at all times and in all seasons, violating mandatory screening standards. A negative economic externality. The unmitigatable visual impact is expected to negatively affect the property values of nearby large lot residential homes, potentially causing, uh, issues in, in their value, violating the special use standard to protect property values. An inclusionary zoning mitigator, while denial carries a risk, you know, it, it, the unmitigatable impacts at this specific, specific site, um, it, I just feel it, it doesn't meet the mandatory special use standards.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
That's all well and good.
It is.
Yep, but the practicality of life today is that, uh, the chances are extremely strong that that will not be used for agricultural use. Um, and the reason I say that is because the, um, what I want to refer to as the spa area was all part of that property. And on that property, prior to the spa, uh, application, uh, in the immediate area of, of the house, there is, uh, a barn and horseshoes, and that is, I don't believe, any longer in use. This is from a, I think from an innovation point of view of, um, Greenhaven Road is, is going to be out of sight. And we know, we know that across the road, uh, the other piece of property that Rickaman has that is vacant at this point, he, um, has plans to subdivide that. So I think that,
I'm losing your, I'm losing your point. If you could just summarize.
My point, all right, and, and I think, I, I think that this, the concern for agricultural use is not, is not a valid concern at this point in time.
That's, that's, thank you for your opinion. Thanks, Peter. Um, Chair? Yeah. Did, did you get to present everything you wanted to present about it? I just want to give the applicant an opportunity to.
Well, no, I didn't. I, I wanted to first introduce myself.
I think we should let him, yeah. Go ahead, please.
All right, so, um, a little background about myself. So I am with, as I said, EDF Power Solutions. Um, we are one of the largest developers of renewable energy in North America. We're broken up into four separate groups. We have a grid scale power group that originates, develops, and constructs large transmission level projects. We have the distribution scale, uh, which I am part of, and we develop, uh, originate, develop, and construct mid-sized utility scales on the distribution level, um, either for off-takers of both electric cooperatives or community solar projects that we specialize in. We have an onsite solution group, which does onsite solar storage, charging stations, et cetera, for institutions, corporations, et cetera. And then we have an asset management group. Um, we currently have about 20 projects that we already have in the ground in New York State, right now totaling about 60 megawatts worth of projects. Um, and again, um, if you did, I think I think you all have some information in the slide deck that has the locations of those sites. Um, but this particular project, as I mentioned, is in a C3 zone, which is an industrial zone.
So we're in the area, is it?
We are, here, it's not an agricultural C3. Um, the project we're proposing, it's a three-megawatt project, and again, that's going to be a community solar project. It's part of this solar for all program in New York State. That's what we're applying for. We're only going to be utilizing about 16 acres of way that's currently designed. And I have to say, it's not been fully engineered because of some of our preliminary due diligence that we're working on. Um, so we're finally finalizing that. We're hoping to get our engineer put together to submit to you all for, for your reviewing and decision on. Uh, that said, we completed the interconnection study with Nice Eggs already. Here's a question about where we're going to be talking. And again, that's tying, tying into the Southern Lake substation right up the street, about half a mile, a little over, half a mile up the street. Uh, this, the design you're looking at, again, is about four and a half megawatts of DC panels. Uh, we're going to have 12 inverters involved with that. Uh, it's about 1100 square foot access drive that we'd be proposing to get back to the back parcel of the site. Uh, we would plan on meeting all your solar, basically your solar ordinance, meeting all your requirements for the solar ordinance. So we, we've looked into that already. Um, and then, let's, if you're, plan to meet any decommissioning requirements that you may have. And leading up to it, as I said, we plan on inviting all the neighbors of the surrounding area up to the, to answer any questions that they may have leading up to the, to the planning commission, so we can incorporate any comments they have into the design. We also submitted to you all, um, a photo log that we had taken from the surrounding area, the C3 shed. And as you were saying, sir, you can't see the site, you can't see the back of the field from the surrounding area. The parcel to the rear of it is an existing solar site up to Prism, which has been online for quite a few years now, so. That was also put in by the state with no MFP town, so, you, nobody had a choice. Noted. Um, but yeah, so like I said, there was four questions we had that we were hoping you could answer to.
What kind of, you said?
All right, uh, may I speak? Chair? Am I okay to comment?
Oh, please.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, so I think what I'd like to say is, um, I, I appreciate what you're saying, John.
Yeah.
It's a farm, it's pastoral. We would love to keep it that way, if we had our druthers.
Right.
And, um, we do want to try to protect farmland. I live on a farm. Um, the, you know, that being said, we've designated it as a zone for, uh, C3 in, uh, light industrial. So what we have to consider as a board is, um, agriculture is allowed in almost every zone, uh, but what we have to consider as a board is what it can become if it doesn't become this. And what are some of the uses of light industrial C3? Could be manufacturing buildings, um, commercial uses like stores or, um, areas of la, large impervious pavement. Um, you know, so when I consider the application, I consider it in what's the best possible use for the site based on what it's zoned as. As far as the, you know, whether it permanently takes away agricultural soils, my understanding of the, of the, of the panels are such that they, you, you're not doing any earth moving. You're, you're putting a small footing in the ground, and it can be irreversible. Um, you might argue it can be more irreversible than a large manufacturing building. Um, we did have one applicant come in and propose to do a marijuana growing operation, which was a large warehouse building. Um, it wasn't for that zone, but, um, my feeling about panels, these, these electric panels, the solar panel array, is, um, I'm glad we're doing non, you know, reusable energy. I like them for that perspective. I don't like the view of them visually. I don't think it's, fits within the character of a rural community. But that being said, um, they're quiet, they don't start tractors early in the morning, they don't have parties in the late evening. they don't have parties in the late evenings, they don't, you know.
They're not supposed to.
They're good, they're good, they're good neighbors in that respect as long as they're buffered so that you're visually, you can't see them. They're great neighbors. They don't cause us, our schools to increase in the need to have a lot of more children at our schools. So they're good for our tax base. You know, so generally, that's how I feel about these solar array projects. I, I do think it's more desirable and I, I feel for the farmers, they need a way to make their land pay. Farming is getting harder and harder to justify keeping land. I would much prefer they had a way of keeping their land through growing crops and livestock, but if, if it's zoned for industrial, I fear for what the potential of it could be. We were happy with the, with the spa. We thought there was a lot of really neat, innovative, creative ideas. Unfortunately, we can't have that. All that being said, I just have one question. What are you planning on doing at the front part of the lot?
Nothing, nothing. Leaving the existing vegetation. And again, the project is primarily screened now with the existing vegetation. The site plan that we have there that you all have in front of you, we've also are showing some proposed around the, the two sides, there's some barren areas where we would propose additional vegetative plantings to screen those areas and then in the rear of the site too. But if you drove along there now, you couldn't see the back of the field. And beside that, on the up, there's a stream that bisects the property and that also has additional screening. You couldn't see it. If we built, if it was there today, you wouldn't have known it.
What's the, I'm sorry, I know you want to talk that. I just have one, one last question. What's the lifespan of a solar array?
About 35 years to 35 years.
How is, how is the profitability of these or the sustainability of them going to continue without, without additional funding?
Without additional funding?
Right. Assuming that, you know, because there would have to be a decommission plan if it failed, right? And, you know, with bankruptcy and all of this type of thing happening these days, I know it would be bonded.
Yeah, it would be bonded, yes.
And there's the future value calculations and that sort of thing. And then there's the, the decommissioning, the recycling, which doesn't really happen in the way, you know, that say kitchen garbage recycles. And then, you know, it's in the end, the contribution to the grid.
Correct.
From what I understand, it's, it's less than 1% right now in New York State. Is that correct or am I wrong?
Is the amount of electricity?
Yeah, the, the, the renewable energy, right? I'm, I'm part of, you know, solar farms.
Okay.
In my business and personal. But from, from what I understand currently, renewable energy is less than 1% of the total amount consumed.
The portfolio of electricity being completed? I don't know the answer to that mistake, but I can get that for you.
You know, you, you, yeah, I just thought maybe you would have known. The, the point is, is that the less renewable forms of electricity account for over 99% of our current, you know, usage.
Nationally, I read an article in the New York Times relatively recently that we're about 75% dependent on fossil fuels.
Okay, right, right, right. I think my number was New York State currently.
I can confirm that and get that to you tomorrow.
Because, you know, to me, you would want to look at California, you'd want to look at New York.
Right.
Where the most amount of effort is taking place. I know down in Texas.
Arizona's big.
Arizona's big, but down in Texas, they actually created an entire community that was renewable and the rates went through the roof. They had to, they had to reverse their, their, it wasn't sustainable, blackouts, and the rates went through the roof. So, you know, I, I'm mostly concerned, I mean, behind this property is sewer treatment, is that right?
Yeah.
And then there's dumps here in this area?
Yeah, the, the old lagoons from the sewage treatment plant from the prison.
From the sewage treatment, you know. And it's, and then we have that stream that bisects it.
Yeah, Frog Holler Brook.
And the buffer you've already accommodated?
This is showing at least a minimum of 80 foot buffer around the project.
Eighty?
Eighty foot from the property line.
The wetlands requires a hundred foot?
Fifty from the stream, I think.
Oh, fifty from the stream.
Sorry, there, we found, we did do a jurisdictional determination with NISEC. So we identified there is one wetland on the site, there's a stream, but in addition to the stream, there's one wetland with a hundred foot setback requirement.
Is Russell here?
It's not necessarily shown on there, but that current design, it is setback from not only the wetland, but the hundred foot setback that would be required by NISEC.
There is a light line where you can see what that would be, but outside of the area of the palace, construction.
So you had something?
Yeah, I just have a curious question and not, not necessarily to do with the planning of this, but once a solar field is constructed, how is the assessment done on the property? Does it increase the value of the property?
The, typically it does, yeah, most jurisdictions, yeah.
Do we know what percentage?
That's based on whatever.
Is it based on per unit that you, per panel that you put in, value?
It just, it depends whatever jurisdiction you're in, they have various measures to assess it. But we would be willing also to enter into a pilot agreement with the local jurisdiction if you would be interested in that.
Well, I'd like, I'd like you to address the question maybe. That would be great because you would be educating us as well about.
The value.
Well, I, I don't know, because it's, it typically goes to the, the property owner if they increase the value of the lot based on having the solar farm on it.
Right. I would like to know what, what value, added value it is to the property, which is then reflected in the taxes that are collected as a result of.
Well, like you just said, the last one entered into a pilot agreement with the town. So I don't know if they're paying less or more than they would have been before.
What does that mean?
A pilot agreement. Payment in lieu of taxes pilot.
Meaning they paid or someone's paid?
The project. The, the other one, they pay an annual payment to the town. It's in lieu of taxes.
I see.
To offset.
So, so I don't know if it's more or less than they would have been by just taxing the property regular.
To me, it's an added value.
So we'd like to know the taxes now versus after with the assumption that this was approved.
But Dan said on the, one on South Greenhaven, correct?
Yeah.
That in lieu of taxes they make is an agreement.
Yeah.
With the town to, for, right.
That doesn't, that doesn't change the school taxes.
I don't know if the pilot has to deal with the school or the property or both.
Yeah.
If you could provide us with all of that information, what I'm specifically looking for is the values minus the pilot payment.
Right.
So I.
The tax increases on the property?
The, the value before and after property and, thank you. Thank you. No, that's a good question. Thank you for bringing that one up. So here in here.
Large scale solar, so that's, that's just the first two pages and the law follows. So you, you're aware of that obviously, local law, one of 2019. It's not necessarily in our E code, you have to kind of dig into the new laws even though it's.
Yes.
Six years ago now, I guess.
So that one still hasn't been uploaded?
Yes, I think that's 15543. Can I answer your question that you asked about the removal, the return to farmland? After the, the project, and keep in mind, there's a, there's a financial incentive for the projects to be recycled because a lot of the constituent parts have value, recyclable value. So we would remove the post typically to at least a minimum 36 inches from the ground or take the panels off, they would be recycled. We would remove the post and restore the project to its previous condition. So it could be returned to farmland at the end of its useful life.
That's all on the bond, right?
And you would hold on the bond, yes, correct. One of the.
Which if we're here, which New York State, whatever is on top of this with suggestions.
Ag markets?
The, no, not ag markets, but for a progression of what that bond should, should be as it goes from year one, in this case, to year 30 or 40, whatever the case may be because of inflation. So that it would not be a stagnant, I believe it should be set up so it's not a stagnant number.
And often, and in many jurisdictions that I've worked in also, we've revisited, part of one of the conditions, we revisit that maybe every five years or so. Yeah, I think that's what we do at Greenhaven too.
Yeah.
I think that was the agreement there. And there was another site that we were involved with where they had to run through and do compaction tests after the panels were all installed and, and to make sure that the soils hadn't been over compacted during the construction, trying to leave them in a better state for future potential return to agriculture. So we could always look into that as well.
I took a drive down there and I got, Pete and I, we, we toured around the, the project before it was, it was finalized and a lot of the trees on, what's her name again?
Pete. Melissa?
Mrs., Mrs.
Rettkowski.
Her son, John, yeah, Klein. Mrs. Klein's property.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You know, all those trees were twigs, literally twigs, you know, on the end of a branch. Okay, that's what I'm talking about. Probably the diameter.
Died or you're saying they're?
That's what they planted. What, what was planted there were twigs that big, right? Not.
But that was not a.
The diameter of the pen.
Yeah.
The cartridge inside the pen and a lot of them had been driven over. Pete drove, drove over three of them going back there while we were walking around, driving around.
Killing trees?
So one of the, one of the things that you could possibly consider then would be during the oversight of any screening and planting that you want, you can have, you know, an independent arborist or whatnot, maybe go out and make sure that the trees were installed per the plan at the size that they were specified on the plan.
Well, we've got experience with one solar project under our belt. So let us proceed from there.
Are you suggesting they didn't plant per the plan or, or that we didn't plant properly?
I don't think that we, we specified the calipers as clearly as we should.
These were more shrewds.
As part of the submission, we would also provide visual specifications as well to show you what those screenings would be in addition to the existing treatments. So we would be able to give you some sort of visual representation of how that should be properly screened and what it should look like within five to 10 years. And obviously, if you're interested in having specific species or sizes listed on the plan, we'd be well happy to do that.
Do you have any local sites where vegetation has been established for a number of years and anything that you can show the board or? I mean, I'm sure one of the 20 sites in New York that we've worked on, so I can get. Yeah, that could be, that could be something that. I don't know how. If there's something local, you know, maybe the, maybe the board would be interested.
We, we work on solar energy systems, battery energy storage systems, energy chargers all around New York and the United States and certainly have those submissions that we can give to you as an example prior to submission.
Nice, nice to disagree to accept the power that you produce.
Well, we need to get in the program, but in order to do that, we need the local approval first. So once we have that, then we'll submit. We, we've done the NISEC study, so the, in other words, the sys, they can handle us at the local substation. So, but we, before we submit to the, the program officially, we need the actual, the local permit to do that.
So I didn't intimidate you with my opening speech?
A little bit.
I was hoping, because I was hoping to intimidate you all the way back to it being a Nordic spa.
I.
Well, the manager were not to speak for them, but I can still have some conditions that can be made. This is, you know, something I guess that was hoping to mention.
My traps are going to detach though, by the way.
I would love that.
That's what I'm talking about, yes. I, you know, I have nothing to say, Rob.
I have no.
Or somebody else.
I have no, I have no problem with them moving forward. To me, it's going to be out of sight, out of mind. And also it is going to be better than these battery farms that I read about.
Those are rough.
The battery energy storage systems, are you talking about?
Well, I can read to you a list of.
You know, big.
Batteries.
Storage facilities, the data centers.
I can read you a list of uses that would be permitted on the site. Wholesale business, these are by permitted use. Warehouse storage, self-storage center.
Those are beautiful.
Retail service establishment greater than 25,000 square feet, that's like a.
Home Depot.
That could be a Home Depot, it could be a car, you know, a car lot. Some of those things aren't irreversible.
An Amazon?
Or much more.
Rob, I'm in favor.
Everything, isn't everything?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm proving your point.
Isn't everything special use?
And then there's a lot, those were by permit, permitted use. Then there's a ton of other stuff that's specially used, but, you know, the motor vehicle service facility.
So the thing does, come, come.
I don't know why we zoned it C3, I don't know why we zoned it C3, but it's.
And don't, don't forget, specially permitted use is still a permitted use.
Right.
It just runs through with some additional conditions and things for your consideration, that's all.
Additional conditions.
Excuse me?
The conditional conditions.
What's that?
We discussed it in the end of that last call and we know that.
Yeah.
Other ones who work with you to the best of our ability, they take the environment very seriously, take all of the proper precautions to make sure that we can mitigate any environmental damage and restore everything to previous condition. And certainly, they're always going to have some pushback from the community, we're happy to give good comments, we're happy to address them to the best of our ability. We don't want to comment and bully the board and bully the community. We want to work this out and have the best of issues.
I would love to hear you saying that you're happy to hear public comment after.
Who's the owner of the property?
The, the Rettkowskis.
Huh?
The Rettkowskis.
So I, the, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm still interested in knowing if there's wetlands, steep slopes and.
Sure.
I definitely am very interested or I want to make sure that my, you know, my being okay with solar panels on a farm doesn't, you know, relieve you of my, I also feel strongly about the environmental issue. So that's something that I'd like us to, to work on.
And do you realize we're in an aquifer district as well? We have some questions.
A what district?
An aquifer overlay.
Aquifer overlay, right.
And we do have some questions about that review process and how that works later and what we should be expecting and what we're going to.
I mean, I can jump on that for you if you want. 15512D is the standards within the aquifer overlay. So basically, there's five standards listed there and we expect that you provide us with some answers and some supporting data for that. And then the board has to go through and consider those standards and they'll, they'll do that at a meeting at some point. It's usually placed on the plans as well. Yeah, so that's, that's probably the easiest thing. I mean, it does say report in the, in the code, I believe, but we also have it just put on the plans and so.
Would you be willing to utilize?
I would, we might have to do some of the slope calculations first. So we anticipate a CD's permit for this project, moving their CDC, and we anticipate preparing full suite. Would that be part of your considerations for aquifer overlay?
That's part of. Uh, that's part of it. I mean, it's one of the things, I mean, one of the, one of the questions is impacts to, you know, alterations of surface waters and groundwaters, is, uh, the effects to the, to the groundwaters by your infiltration, whatever else. If you're, um, in certain cases, it's about how much you're taking away from recharge. So you'll, you'll see the standards, you'll, you'll be able to go through them, I think you'll be able to address them.
I also seem to, go ahead, Rob.
Would, are you, would you be willing to employ landscape architect to assist in the design for the planting, buffer plantings and things?
Yes, we have, we have a landscape architect on our team, they actually did the, the.
Okay. Also, Rob, I recall you talking about wildflower plantings through, uh, screw holes or plugs, or what did you call it?
Drill seeding?
Drill.
Drill, drill seeding?
Drilled seeding, yes, drilled seeding.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also have heard that goats have been used on those properties, but the, do you get away with that because, get away from that because they jump on the panels and dance?
It's more, um, sheep.
Sheep, right, because the goats do their goat dance on the panel, yeah. Sheep, right.
Yeah, I think the wa, the wildflower mix that was used at Green, the South Greenhaven site is not so good.
Reserve judgment.
I'm, I'm hoping that they come back.
You don't see the effects for two, three years.
That's, that's what I'm hoping for too. Yeah, I mean, they, they use a, a good seeding mix. I, I saw the bags that they use and all, but, you know, it's, it's sparse right now.
Don't take any of my participation as positive. I'm gonna be the, I'm gonna be the, the, the black sheep in this family here. I'm gonna play the devil's advocate.
No, you're gonna bring, bring up good questions.
I'm gonna be the donkey, exactly. Wally or, Wally or Sally. I'm buying, I'm buying a farm. Yes. Pardon?
Donkeys.
It's gonna have all kinds of things happening, yeah. It'll be, uh, it'll be interesting, yeah, thank you.
Would you love to ask some of our other questions?
Yeah, a couple of the other ones. Um, we know on the ordinance, uh, one, one five five four three H. Um, you have the, the minimum or maximum tree clearing allowance. We were trying to better understand the intent of that. And I guess try to better understand how you gauge that, what, what your math is for gauging that.
Max, maximum tree clearing, you said?
Well, what you're considering, because there's three criteria, it is, it's shrubs, I'm sorry, it's brush, trees and vegetation. Says no more than fifteen percent of the total existing brush, trees and other vegetation on a parcel of property may be removed in order to accommodate an S E S, solar energy system.
So, my first thought regarding that, right, assuming that I was looking at this favorably. The hedge row that goes right down the center, is there any way of maintaining that and splitting the panels? And then, uh, I don't know how close you are to the buffer of the stream on the. The hedge row in the center. Yeah, so I see that you're looking to wipe that out.
We are, so I can try and understand it, but I, there's a.
And then, and, yeah, because you have the stream right there, the other hedge row.
Right, so we can move up here a little bit.
I just don't know where you are in relation to the buffer zone of that.
So basically, the, the buffer, I mean, the stream, the bank is, this is, this, this is an older drawing. We just had to let them study and recognize that. So this isn't here anymore. So the next drawing that you'll see from us, I want to include this. So we could move right up here.
Yeah, I would be in favor of preserving that hedge row, is what I, yeah.
Some of it will have to go, obviously, because I mean, we really don't have much else room to work with back here.
I wouldn't have a problem getting rid of the invasive species, you know, the hardwoods. Is, I don't know if there are any hardwoods there.
Why, why do you think there's a hedge row there? Is, is there a stream under there?
No, there's not a stream, there isn't.
Oh, I'm just assuming that that's a hedge row.
I, I know, it is a hedge row, but why? Why, why would there be a hedge row?
It's probably too wet to hay.
Done, done in such a natural form.
It's per, you know.
It's a drainage ditch.
Yeah, it's probably too wet to hay, and, you know, I think that field was used for hay, hay in the past, so.
Hey, scrub.
It could be.
It warrants a trip.
Yeah, you know, tree, existing tree surveys are important for the board to consider, so that's, that's something you'll, you'll cross.
I felt ignored.
Just now?
Thank you. Why don't you describe it?
Yeah.
So I would say that, um, there, there is a tree line there, um, on the edges. It's more, um, brush.
Brush.
Yeah, um, so it does thin towards the edges, but there's a tree line, I would say, right here. And right here is kind of a more solid tree line. Um, I guess our question for you is, um, what the definition of education would be? Seeing that it covers all the trees and brush, what's education? And would that include, um, the, the moed grass area? Like, where, where is that line?
Yeah, and, and I think what we, I think the way we interpreted it before was that, you know, the removals that you're gonna have are basically the size of all your, whatever your, your helical peers are, or whatever you're gonna use to secure each panel. So you can calculate the square footage of each one of those per each panel. And come up with a number there. That's vegetation removal. Your, your gravel drive, your, you know, your access drive, that's, that's removal. But not like the, the area of the panel, that's not, because there's, there's vegetation underneath the panel.
This was an S.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, everything you're gonna be doing here is vegetation, probably, unless you're using an existing drive.
Just grass.
Well, it, it actually had been hay.
Yeah, so some of that would constitute removal.
There was a place he was ca, he was cutting, taking from, was there?
Because every new would be entirely over the.
And that's where we were looking for mitigation through the wildflowers, or sheep, I don't, I like sheep.
And I, I think you're, uh, you're also dealing with Article fifteen, stream disturbance on that. That's, I think it's a pretty highly classified stream, if I remember right.
And to me.
You, you have a crossing existing that's usable?
Existing bridge spans across the.
Yeah. Big enough for all your equipment and for, and for construction equipment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah? All right.
Yeah, we did a structural.
Okay, and then, uh, you know, our code has one fifty-five, fifty-two as water bodies, water courses. And so we're gonna, we have regulation on that stream as well, so.
I'm sorry?
We have regulation on that stream as well, as a town. So the planning board will have purview of that. If there's anything that constitutes them issuing a water resource permit, that's part of the public hearing process as well.
And is that a drainage ditch? Did you notice through your video?
Um, you can't see through the video, but we did a wetland delineation report. Um, and we also have the D E C come up.
I mean, the one in the center, the hedge row in the center.
This one here is a drainage ditch, yes.
And what is it draining?
It's draining those fields.
Yeah, they did that, they used to do.
Draining the fields so they don't have any wet spots and wet, wet feet on the bash.
Dividing this part of the field to be the wet area, so the other parts of the field don't have to be wet.
Right.
Oh, right, okay.
Are there tiles there, or you don't know?
I don't know specifically enough, but I can ask our natural resources team, um, to see what they found.
Yeah, well, uh, what I remember in the archaeological find from before, which they have on file. There were, uh, the honeypots, uh, clay honeypots. Can you believe I remember that?
From here?
Yeah.
I do not remember that.
Oh, they said there was, there was there?
I, it's a random fragment that I pulled out of my archaeological dig.
I'm sure Melissa still has all that information.
Yeah. And I had to look up honeypot. Any of you know what that is?
Oh geez.
That's how they used to, that's how they used to move the sewage.
Did you have another question?
I'm sorry? Yes, I did, and if, I think you were, you, those two, it's about the driveway. And in your ordinance, I think it's over four percent slopes, you had a requirement of paving.
Paid for the entirety.
Is there a reason for that? I mean, typically, we just use crushed stone. It's, uh, I mean, typically, we haven't had any issues.
You're gonna be over four percent?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna be over four percent?
Well, it, it does get steep, I don't know the fine calculation yet, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to understand that, but, I mean.
Yeah, I didn't write that code, but it, you know, I do always bring that up when somebody has a driveway and, you know, because we normally get profiles in the driveways and then, you know, if it's over four percent, it's like, you know, it's supposed to be paid for the entirety.
Ten percent should, it should be like ten percent before you acquire paving, right?
Our code says four.
No, you're right, yes.
I, I recall the, the last solar project.
But that's pre-existing.
I'm sorry?
Your road is pre-existing.
The road there is pre-existing.
It's pre-existing to about here.
You're gonna still need construction access and construction access.
We would be extending it down past the stream here, so, I mean, but typically, I mean.
You're crossing the bridge, it's, is there, right? And that road, and the access to that bridge was pre-existing.
The access to the bridge is pre-existing, yeah, but there's not a paved road there now, it's a paved road. The paved drive goes up here as of right now.
Right.
I, I think what you're leading to is, are, are we going to be requiring you to pave? And our code says four percent, I think you're likely less than four percent, because as I recall, it's pretty flat. But even if it isn't, I, you've heard some of the comments from our public. Um, we, we don't wanna have a lot of paved surfaces, we don't wanna have, you know, we want things to percolate into the ground. The reason for those laws are for, we, we wanna worry about erosion. So if you have good justification for why it can be gravel and, and how you're, how you're mitigating erosion effects, that's something.
The only issue that I recall from, from the last solar farm project was that the fire trucks, the F A B wanted fire truck access. Uh, their, their heavy equipment was of concern.
Yeah, and then they wanted, uh, you know, there was a fire break between the panels and the, and the, uh, outer fence. And then an area outside of the fence that was still gonna also be maintained, which would have provided a fire break there. And something that they could actually go around the perimeter if there was ever a fire, just to make sure that the perimeter stays wet.
And they wanted to protect just.
Go inside the fenced area, but.
Right.
They don't, because typically.
They do not wanna go into the fenced area.
Yeah, they don't, they don't wanna go in with their packs on or on foot. They just wanna make sure that none of the neighboring properties are damaged.
If it's burning, they're gonna let it burn, but they're just gonna protect, try to protect all the properties around it, though.
Okay, um, and that is our last question.
Is that unusual?
That isn't, yeah, I remember.
It is, but we did, um, we did find that in your minutes, and we have a question for you.
Well, I'm, I'm curious what is normal, not abnormal.
A knox box, typically, we'll, we'll take, so we'll construct a site, well, where the fire, once it's built, we'll bring the fire department out. And of course, we're, we're working with the fire chief throughout the development process and the procurement process. So above, seen him before, or out, you know, gave the fire chief, and then we'll bring him out to the site. We'll show them around and we provide them a knox box through the life of the project, where we'll put a key in the knox box and they'll have access to the site if they need to get to it.
So let's refer to that process.
The knox, the knox box is, oh shit.
I just put one.
Set off, set off by an electronic signal. And, um, it enables you to access a key to access whatever building. There's, there's knox bots for this building here in case there's a fire.
Yeah, their, their position was they're not gonna fight fire if there's a fire inside of there. They're not gonna spray water on any panels that could still be collecting electricity and, you know, so they, they had, um, there's, I believe there's a remote call-in at that one where the fire department could call them and they could shut it right from remotely, you know, so that it's not drawing power anymore. But, um, but the panels still collect electricity no matter if they're seeing sunlight.
If they're seeing sunlight.
Yeah, so they're not gonna go in there and spray any water or foam or anything. They're just, you know, they're just gonna protect the property around it. That was the position they took on the last one.
So I guess, uh, the, the, so we did see that, but I guess there's some questions that we have about. So what the, because the, the way this is designed here, I mean, this is, we're set back with eighty foot setback from the property lot. Would that, and could we include that in, within that setback? Or would that, within that even setback?
I think there was no panels within the eighty foot or whatever. I forget what the, uh.
But if we needed an access road for a fire truck, would we be able to put that in a setback?
Uh, yeah, I believe so, I believe so. I don't think that was restricted.
Would that just be like a paved areas, is it a made?
No, no, it was.
It was gravel.
No, it was actually, it was, uh, mowed.
Mowed, yeah, they, they were responsible for, uh, according to a mowing schedule.
A mowing schedule.
Yeah, I mean, basically, they were, they were planning on taking, you know, no actual piece of fire apparatus. Maybe just like, you know, F three fifty or something like that, and then.
Brush truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Based on a, based on a five fifty chassis.
Hey, yeah, that's it, I think that's, that was it for the questions.
Rob, do, do wildflowers grow under these panels? Is it possible, or do they get dry and die?
They grow between the panels, I don't know if they grow directly under them, but.
In between, yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is the frog hollow brook, is that trout stream there?
I don't know, you, I, you can barely get back there.
Chris would have probably known, yeah.
Does that, does that connect to red wings?
I only ask because.
No?
Frog hollow.
Oh, okay.
There's the old.
Warfar.
Yeah, yeah.
You get the, uh.
Go in, rain after, slightly down the hill.
I know.
Remember, and then, and then the old, then the bridge. I don't know what.
Just be cognizant of that too.
Down, down the road, the, where you can see, he put in a new drive and a new bridge crossing.
Yeah, it's just, it's just really about, like, you know, you, you, those things are baking in the sun and then all of a sudden, uh, summer storm comes through and now all of a sudden that rain is hitting that, that, it's getting hot, it's running off into that trout stream. So if there's ways to make sure that that's good control, and maybe it gives it a lot, an, uh, ability to run it through the soil. I think you're gonna have really good soils here. My recollection is that there was a lot of really nice sand and gravel on the front part. I don't know if it's the same case in the back, but you, you can get a lot of infiltration and then that water will have a chance to cool down before it migrates into the stream and affects the trout.
What is gonna be the use of the front end of the property, do you know?
I'm sorry?
Oh, no.
I think, there was a gra, there was a real good gravelly home in the. What I remember, yeah. And I think that's why they were mucking out that other area back there. I think they were taking sand and gravel back from where that big pond is right there.
Yes, they were.
So they, they hit the, they hit the groundwater table and just, you know, but there was really good sand and gravel there.
Well, I'll give you a piece of information. We, we reviewed two, in our tenure, or at least in my tenure, we reviewed two solar panel projects. One up in Clap Hill and one on Greenhaven. Clap Hill never got built because our neighbors were very upset about it. In fact, it, it influenced a moratorium on it until we worked it out on our, on our plan. At Greenhaven, there was less residents, but there were neighbors that had a lot of issues. Um, there was three or four neighbors who came out and, at every meeting.
Well, again, I think, I'm actually leading up to our submission, having, like, before we come to you again, with our submission, inviting all the neighbors in the area. In fact, I was at, at the, at the recreation center this morning to see if they had a, a building next month.
Oh, before the public hearing?
Before the public hearing, yeah, so, so.
I like that guy, that's okay, yeah. It's a tough job.
You've been in the trenches before, so you know, you know what takes place.
The, uh, so now, just the way my brain works. So is, I know, don't let us, don't let us. The, uh, is the front part of the property now, uh, possibly still being considered for the spa?
He's got it all on, on the table still.
He still has it all on the table, and this will help fund that effort.
I don't wanna speak for any property owners.
No, yeah, I can appreciate that, but it, unofficially and off the record, has that been part of the conversation?
Well, I think he submitted a letter about the fact that he's still interested. Well, I think he submitted a letter about the fact that he's still interested.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for him. I can't speak for him.
But as I recall, that would probably need to be modified because some of the spa went into the area where...
Yeah, some of it was overhanging, I think.
It went into the area where the panels are.
Especially around the stream.
They would have to come back if they want to modify that.
There was definitely a rendering of somebody really enjoying themselves back there.
Right, right.
Just don't develop it.
Any other questions?
Yes, getting to be my bedtime. Can we go home?
I'm good, yeah.
Well, I do, actually, because you all spoke about wanting to go back and see this. Is that something you would want to do in the next couple of weeks after what we're having?
We can't go as a group.
You can go as a group as long as you don't discuss.
Okay.
You can all grow if you want. Normally...
I'll have to be gang.
And normally, we would have to advertise it, though, as, you know, there'd have to be some notification so that other people could come if they wanted to, because it is technically an open meeting that way. But you could also go in smaller groups, but still, you really, it's not proper for you to discuss it while you're there.
Talk about your grandkids.
Yes.
Those are the kinds of things you can talk about.
I mean, usually, Peter and I, we get in his truck, and we make, we make a day of it.
As long as there's not a lock.
Maybe I have to take all your numbers or...
Yes.
Yeah, you can reach out to us, sure. Yeah, I think it's...
Sheriff can get, you know, sheriff can always forge some stuff on, too.
But he's really good. He just picks out little toys. I may spend five or six dollars. He doesn't...
What's adjourned?
What's adjourned? Can I have a motion?
I'm ready.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, John, I don't happen to agree with you. I miss...